Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, November 14, 2022. We'll get the meeting opened with a roll call. Sherri Quirk?
Here.
Mike Baptiste?
Yeah.
Jane Gleason?
Here.
Carl Schultz?
Here.
Sam Corbett?
Here.
And the chair is here, so we have a full board. A little bit of, I don't know, we'll go right, yeah, a little bit of housekeeping. The approval of the meeting minutes of 10:17:22. I read through them. I saw just a couple of really small typographical things, but I didn't see any content issue. In the roll call, the meeting was presented in the town hall as opposed to municipal building. I had time on my hands today. Section 4, Continued Public Hearings, vote on continuance to 4/11:22. I'm pretty sure maybe that was supposed to be 11:14. And that was it. That was all I caught. Did anybody else catch something that I missed?
I was running too much today. Didn't get a response.
Shame on you. That's usually my excuse. Sherri, did you see anything that caught your eye on the meeting minutes? Okay. Mike?
No.
Sam?
Make a motion we accept as corrected.
We have a motion to accept the meetings. We have a second.
As amended.
As amended. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of October 17, 2022, as amended, please say aye. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. I'll give that to Sonia so she can make the changes. Items 2 and 3, we had a little bit of a clerical error, and these were added to tonight's agenda in error. So anybody that would be here for 150 to Honett Road or 27 Charge Pond Road, those were actually continued until 11:28. They weren't supposed to be on tonight's agenda. So I guess we would make a motion to accept the original continuance for 11:28.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, second by Carl Schultz. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
Item number 4, Discussion Impossible Vote, Bay Point Wood Pines Tripartide Release. I don't see Mr. Fay here. Is there anybody here tonight to talk to this subject?
I can speak to it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
This is the same request that had been previously submitted for 367,000 to be released total. There's been work since that time that's been done, but this is from a month ago that it's the same request that had been previously submitted. You had already released the covenant. This was for the tripartite agreement, though, and this was a bond that had been put up for the work on the Phase 2 and 3, I believe.
Okay.
But Charlie has been reviewing the work and been okaying the construction, so he should have the final say on the total amount that's due Windward Pines as a result of the work that they've completed.
Okay. I don't see any of the correspondence documents or anything like that loaded up to the website so that we can review them. Charlie, could you weigh in on this, please?
You still have my letter of September 12.
I do.
That's the original report, the only difference between it and what the numbers are. I'm not sure where the number of 300 and some odd thousand came from. My recommendation was 118,000, but that was less the onset fire district work, and their requested amount was 172,000, $148 for that. If you have accepted the email which came from onset, then you could add that to my recommendation. That comes up to 290, 290,76089.
Well, could you repeat that number, please?
I have the numbers here if you want to give me a minute just to look at the water amount and be sure that was right.
Why is there a difference between you and him?
Excuse me?
Why is there a difference between you and Ken?
I don't know.
Ken, can you enlighten us?
That's just what had been submitted by Windward Pines, was what they had completed, they thought they had completed. So one of the things they didn't do, though, was they had looked at the completion of the utility work that, including the sewer line as well, too, and partial construction in there. But I don't think that they were asking for it at this time. They were going back to the lesser amount that I think Charlie had identified in his letter.
Well, in the release, we need to be clear on what line items we're releasing, right?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, it's a definitive number. It should reference line items.
Right. Yeah, we talked through the line item approach last time, and I was convinced that that was acceptable.
Okay.
And the other thing is, we had talked about, we need to properly restrict the release of the covenant and the tripartite agreement because it's not all of Phase 3. In fact, it's none of Phase 3.
Right. It's Phase 2.
It's only the stuff on Starboard Drive. And we just have to make sure the wording is correct. So the release of covenant should have only been for Phase 2.
It was.
Okay. Yeah, we have not gotten a copy of that. The applicant was supposed to provide us with that certification-stamped copy, right?
Yeah, he's supposed to submit it to you.
Which we don't have.
Ken, do you have a stamped copy from the Plymouth records?
No, I do not. I...
Well, I don't think we can act on this if we don't have that document showing that it's officially been released with the...
The right wording and...
Yeah. So...
It has the right wording. It's just that we don't have the registry stamp on it. It's been filed on the land records.
Okay. Well, I think that's, I mean, there's a lot of money here, and I would think that there would have been a little bit more eye on the ball concerning the paperwork. But, you know. Charlie, is it possible, if we put this off until the 28th so that they can supply us with that stamped document?
Sure.
That we could have the line items of what you feel makes up that $290,000?
Well, there are two numbers in my letter of September 12.
Yep, I see that.
The first one is the amount that was for the water work, which has been signed off by onset fire district.
Yep, and I did read that letter.
All right. That's item number 1, and it's 172,148. I just confirmed that by adding up the numbers on their list.
Okay.
On the last page is my recommendation, which was 118,612 dollars and 89 cents.
On line items 13, 22, 22.
Everything except the items that I listed in my letter of the 12th.
Yep.
So everything is there that I cut back.
Okay, so we can reread your letter and identify which lines we should consider complete, and they should add up to the $290,000.
Yes.
Because it does look pretty definitive now that I read it again. It's showing line items for the 118,000 and then line items for the first, the 172,148.
What I did, Mr. Chairman, was take their number and back out of their number, the amount that I wanted to reduce their figures by for certain things that they had not completed or wasn't 100% based on what they had written.
Okay, so if we show, if we show that line item and say the line item is $5,000 and you suggested 2,500, then we can show that line item as incomplete?
Yes, it would be incomplete. For example, item number 2, it was item 10 PVC sewer services. A total of 38 services are shown, but 75% have not been inspected. They weren't even in the ground. The amount requested is reduced to 2,278, and that particular item was 4,500.
I don't see that on the list.
Yeah, it's item number 10.
Item number 10, I have F&amp;P 2-inch asphalt binder. Was this, maybe this list was modified or revised?
This is a list that goes back to August 31. It's the only list that we really have.
That's, the one that I have was, that was attached from the planning office is dated July 30 of 2019.
It's not an updated one.
Okay. Okay, so if we continue this till the 28th with the understanding that Mr. Fay supplied the planning office with both a stamped copy of the release?
Yeah.
And a line-by-line depiction of what it is that we are releasing, then we can release the funds with clear conscience because we know exactly what we're releasing them for, rather than just a blanket number.
I think the line items come from Charlie to be confirmed. What, we got the proposal from...
Essentially, essentially, it's everything on their list less the numbers that I had adjusted.
Oh, I believe you 100%, Charlie. It's just I don't have the correct list, so I can't, I can't look at their list because the one I have is 2 years old.
Okay. Let me hand you forward that to you then.
I'm not sure what's on the webpage. That's what I rely on.
There's nothing on the webpage.
I have no idea what's on the...
No, no, I understand.
I got this from, directly from Windward Pines.
I took, I took this off the webpage.
Okay.
This is the one and only tripartite agreement posted, and it's dated July 30 of 2019.
That's not up to date.
Continuing problem.
Yeah, okay. So I would make a motion that we continue the vote on Bay Point Wood Pines tripartide release in the amount of 290,760, $290,76089 with the expectation that before the next meeting, the board has supplied a stamped copy of the release from Plymouth Registry and an itemized list of what is being asked to be released that's newer than July 30, 2019.
The definitive list.
Yep. Do I have said a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just so you know, my letter of the 12th of September was forwarded to Mr. Fay as well.
Okay, so he's well aware of the fact that...
He should.
Yep, okay.
You should be advised, too, that there may be some other things that he will add to that list to operate it even further, but...
As long as he can bring the documentation, whether it be your approval or somebody else's.
Right. All we're working on right now is the August 31, 2022 list that he submitted.
Okay. I think that's what we'll stick to.
I think Mr. Buckland mentioned some sewer work. There was some sewer work done that was onset Avenue, and I believe that was completed. They've actually been, they put down some of the base and some of the binder on Starboard Drive today. So whether he'll include that or not, I don't know, but you can at least act on this document.
We can at least get this part of it done.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. So we have a motion to continue till the 28th based on a stamped document from the Plymouth Registry of Deeds and an itemized list of the completed projects that amount to the We have a motion by Sam Corbett and a second by Carl Schultz. All those in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 6-0-0. Hopefully, we can get some more completed information for the next meeting. Okay. In respect to the folks that are here for the Continued Public Hearings, I would respectfully ask that the board, that we hop over item 5 and go right to Continued Public Hearings. Could I get a motion to that effect?
Skip number 5 and go straight to public hearings.
Correct.
Well, not skip. Reorder, reorder the agenda so that we address Continued Public Hearings now.
And then we'll go back.
Go back. And go back.
Correct.
So moved.
Yep, second.
Okay, we have a motion to move item 5 till later in the meeting. So a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All those in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 6-0-0. Item number 1, 3-22 Jason St. Martin Site Plan Review, 5 Dodie Street, MAP 103 Lot 1027, proposing a parking lot. Do we have anybody here tonight to speak to this?
I'm going to motion to deny.
Based on...
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Whoop.
Yes.
There's somebody on the...
We have.
This is Emily Williamson with Cheyev Hattery, the engineer, working with EverSource on this project.
Okay, welcome, Emily. So the first thing, let me find my chicken scratch here. There it is. So there was a, there was a letter from Mr. Rowley, July 11, 2022, addressing three short items concerning this project, and I've looked on the website, and I have yet to find any response to these, I don't want to call them conditions, these suggestions.
What was the date of Charlie's letter?
July 11, 2022. Could you maybe enlighten us on this letter, and do you have any feedback on the three items listed?
Let me see if I have a copy of the letter you're referring to. Yeah, I think I... Yeah, so it just says that any permit you guys grant us just references the latest dated plan set and that the long-term operation and maintenance plan. And then, yeah, I mean, I think we reviewed these, and we were, we were totally fine. I mean, we had a, Charlie and I did discuss some of these. So for instance, the parking of good working condition vehicles, that that was something through email correspondence EverSource agreed to. They were totally fine with only having good working vehicles in that parking lot. And then, yeah, with the grass cutting, EverSource is, we're doing like a more of a native planting in there anyways, so it shouldn't be, none of the plants should be less than four inches tall.
Okay. Charlie, did you get a response from her or...
I don't recall getting one.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it either. Anyone else see a response to these? The only, the only thing that I see that pops out at me when I see EverSource, I think about the solar farm over by Target. The name of the road flew out of my head.
Toby.
Toby, thank you. I wanted to call it Dodie Road.
No, no, this is where this...
Yeah, I know. So, you know, item 2 says that the grass not be cut less than four inches, but the issue that we have with EverSource over on Toby Road is it goes months between cutting, and the grass is three feet tall by the time someone finally goes out there and cuts it. So I would be inclined to kind of re-language that number 2 to, to address cutting on a regular basis and keeping the overgrowth down to, you know, a reasonable amount. Obviously, it doesn't have to be manicured, but the grass over on Toby Road, just, it's an eyesore, and it doesn't get addressed when it should get addressed during the cutting season. So would you have, take issue with that if we put a little bit of language in there concerning regular cutting, just not less than four inches?
I don't have issues with that. I think Ryan Earl is on, too, as the EverSource representative, so if he has...
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone for having us tonight. That is not an issue, and we will address Toby Road as well. I don't want that to be a concern of anyone in the room. I'll put my information in the chat just so everybody hears it again, or has it, excuse me. My name's Ryan Earl. I'm in community relations at EverSource, so I work directly with town administrator, emergency management officials, fire chiefs and police, but I'm happy to address any concerns about Toby Road. I don't want that to be a stinging point for anyone there, so happy to help there.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments?
Yes, I have. I have. Mr. Chair, our through you, Mr. Chair, to the applicant. Emily, can you be definitive? What is the date of the plan set we should be reviewing?
Yep, so we submitted one on July 5, was the one we submitted that addressed all of Charlie's original comments. And then there was one that was submitted on September 6 for the conservation review and approval, and there were no differences between the two sets.
So we should be definitive on what set we're going to approve?
Right.
Or deny, whichever way it goes. Okay, so we're going to go with the 9-6 set. Do we have a copy of that? I'm checking the website now.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Yeah, the July 5, though, don't we? Because that's the same as September 6.
Except that a different set was submitted to Conservation Commission, and we should probably work from the same dates. So my next question, Emily, I didn't see, did the Conservation Commission decide on this yet? I thought it was, the last thing I saw, it was Continued.
No, yeah, we have full approval from Conservation Commission, and everything should have been recorded.
Okay, did we get a letter, then, from, from the Conservation Commission as we require an Article 15?
No, we did not.
Okay, so we can't, we can't, there's still open, open items on this.
So we need a copy of the letter from CONCOM?
And...
And we need the newest plan set.
The newest plan set.
So Charlie, as far as the three items that you addressed, you don't see any issue past those?
I think I had put those in as recommended conditions of approval.
Right. But we would need the latest plan set in order to add those conditions.
Yeah, and I agree with Carl. You want to have one set, not two different dates out there.
Right. Okay, so I would, let's see what we got for our calendar. Running out of days for this year.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could. Is there any way to, so just so we're all on the same page, to move this forward, are there any other items that the board has issue with that they need answers to? We, I guess, you know, we were under the impression with CONCOM coming back to the planning board with their approval, if we could get a letter, kind of moving forward, is there anything that we could begin construction pending a decision from the planning board once a letter is submitted? Just trying to fully understand the next steps.
Well, we still are missing the newest site plans, so we would need those in addition to the letter from Conservation. And then as far as, as long as the newest site plan doesn't differ from the one that Charlie worked off of from July, then there would be no alterations to his suggestions, so that would be a non-issue. So it's just a matter of the correct site plans and the letter from Conservation signing off stating they have no jurisdiction. Then we can move it forward.
Or, no, no, they have no condition, or whatever their condition, they need to give us the notice of conditions.
If they have any.
I think there were some.
Yeah, okay. Well, a letter from Conservation...
Is required.
Is required. Correct. So as long as we have those two items, I can suggest putting you on the schedule for Monday, 11:28.
Who typically sends you the CONCOM's approval letter?
We get all our correspondence, what's supposed to happen is we get all our correspondence through the planning board office. But it is, it is the proponent's responsibility to make sure that what's supposed to happen does happen. So, you know, a notation on your tick system to follow up a week later, just to say, hey, did this make it to where it needs to go, would have probably avoided this particular discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The language of the zoning bylaw states that the applicant shall submit to the planning board the order of conditions or the order of resource area designation covering the proposed work.
Yeah.
So it's up to the, it's up to the applicant to submit to the planning board the order of conditions.
Okay. Well, I find it a little disjointed to have an applicant sending out six emails when they could easily send it to the office, and then the office dispers it as a group email to the board. But either way, we don't have the document, so regardless of who didn't do what, the document doesn't reside in our hands or on the website for review.
I was pointing out that it doesn't have to be a letter from the Conservation Commission. It can just be the order of conditions that was issued by CONCOM.
Okay, again...
Submitted by the applicant.
It's just a document. You're referring to a document, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So Emily, does 11:28 work for you?
Yeah, I think so. This should work.
I would entertain a motion to continue 3-22 Jason St. Martin Site Plan Review, 5 Dodie Street, MAP 103 Lot 1027, proposing a parking lot to the planning board meeting scheduled for November 28, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. All those in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Yes, aye. No, no, I'm, I'm just...
It's, the chair votes aye, 6-0-0. It's, I think it's a little bit on the discouraging side because this has been before us how many times since July? And, you know, four months later or three months later, we're just finding out, we have two tiny pieces of information we're missing that we could have cleaned this up. So, okay, very good. We will, we'll see you on the 28th.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I don't need that one anymore. Next up would be the continued public hearing for 33-21 Wareham PV1 LLC Site Plan Review, zero Route 25, map 115, lot 1,000, proposing a ground-mounted solar energy generation facility. So it looks like we have folks to speak to this. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, good evening. My name is John Clavens, I'm from Clavens Law Group, and stepping in where my colleague Betsy Mason left off. And with me is Sarah Ebaugh from VHB. So we began this journey over a year ago, filing the site plan review application for this solar project, many hearings since, a lot of great comments, we've responded to the best of our ability. There was a question about the applicability of the 50-foot setback. We thought it didn't apply, went to the ZBA to get validation or a variance, they turned us down. So instead of sticking to that argument, we have redesigned the project, we've considerably downsized it about 30-odd percent, so that the revised plan shows the 50-foot setback all around. So last week, we submitted that revised plan. A revised stormwater report that reflects those changes. We submitted to check off one other administrative box, a negative determination of applicability from the ConCom that we received in late October, showing our project is not in any wetland resource area or buffer zone under either the State Wetlands Protection Act or the local wetlands by law. And, let's see, we reminded the board that in June, we revised and submitted a decommissioning plan that responds to the concern about disregarding salvage value. And one thing I was talking with, emailing with Ken Buckland earlier today about the decommissioning plan, and we realized one important thing, which is the decommissioning plan is now probably overly conservative, because there are many fewer solar panels to remove at the end of the useful life of the project. And also, it came to our attention that the plan doesn't expressly list the battery energy storage system. So we'd like to rectify both of those things, but do it as part of a condition. We're hoping that the hearing can be closed, and we move on to decision, and then the condition would be that the decommissioning plan is further and definitively updated prior to construction, which we think will be an excellent time to do that, because it can be done in conjunction with the final plans that get submitted for the building permit. We'll know exactly what it is, we'll know exactly what needs to be removed, and we can be assured at that point, it's, you know, neither under-inclusive or underestimating, nor over-inclusive and overestimating. We also conveyed that the goal, and this could be reflected in the commission, the condition as well, is that the financial assurance amount for decommissioning should represent 125% of the gross estimated removal costs, so over and above what's necessary, but with a good margin of error. We also conveyed our agreement that the surety amount would be escalated by 2% on each anniversary of the project's commissioning, all of which could be included in such a condition. So last in our.
Just one more, if I may, Mr. Chair. On the decommissioning plan, one other thing I thought we had agreement on is that we were going to have periodic reviews of the plan, and I think it was every five years
Yes.
To review, so as long as, I know you're new, but we had talked to Attorney Mason about that several times.
Yes. Yeah, I think that may even be in the bylaw.
It is, but as you were going through it, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't miss that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. So last, we reminded the planning board in our communication last week that back in August, in response to public concerns about leaching of PFAS and cadmium telluride from solar panels, we provided documentation from the solar panel manufacturer. Firstly, that the solar panels don't contain PFAS. And two, that the encapsulated cadmium telluride materials don't pose health, safety, or environmental risks. We provided a copy of that report, we also provided a copy of a report written by experts from MIT, among others, with more detailed information about the manufacturer's technology.
The, not to interrupt.
Sure.
That report that you submitted concerning the PFAS, when was that submitted? Because I don't see it on the website under the documents.
I believe that was submitted on August 10th.
Yep. I, I did some admittedly quick reading today on PFAS and the panels that you proposed to be used, and then, I don't know where you found the information, but you're a better man than I, because I couldn't come up with it. I looked everywhere for, you know, to address PFAS leaching, and I couldn't find it.
Sure, you mean in terms of the board's website on the project? Or?
Well, no, in general.
The board's website.
In general, online, you know, I read through your documents, I identified the panels you proposed to use, then I went to the panel manufacturer's website, they didn't talk about PFAS at all.
Right.
So then I went further, trying to find it on, you know, a government site, or somebody that looks at this stuff, and I couldn't find it.
Right, I think they don't talk about it because it's not in their product, so, and it may not be a question that comes up, but they did send us a letter attesting that it's not in their product, and we had submitted that back in August.
And that would have been from Betsy Mason?
Yes.
While Mr. King is looking at a question, over the 20-year life of the project, how do we ensure that replacement panels meet the same condition? Because if something breaks, you're going to come in with a new panel, which you should.
Absolutely.
So how do we, how do we ensure life cycle or life of the project protection?
In terms of?
The PFAS, just the PFAS issue, yeah. If you bring in a new panel, can we condition that it has to meet this restriction? Is that reasonable? I mean, that seems reasonable to me.
If I could, I'm sorry, representatives from Long Road Energy are also on the call, if they could be admitted via Zoom. It's Haley Orbidell and Lindsay Kester should be on.
So we've, my firm has been involved for a decade and a half permitting solar projects all over Massachusetts and beyond. We totally understand the concern about PFAS generally and the environment, it's not been a concern in the solar industry, so I would say this is not a condition that seems necessary or appropriate, you know.
Hi, this is Haley from Long Road, sorry about that, for just joining. Yeah, I can jump in. Personally, I mean, my view would be, if they're not there today, I would see no, honestly, no problem for us agreeing to not, you know, to that condition. On the one hand, I agree with Clavens, but at the same time, from my perspective, I don't want to see PFAS any more than anybody else does, so if it's not there today, and the manufacturers are testing to that, I would see, you know, I reread their letter earlier today as well, just to refamiliarize myself with what they were saying, but they're basically saying they've, you know, whatever they're using today is, you know, surpassed any need for why people would typically use PFAS, and so there would be no reason for them to go back to it, or even think about it again, and so I would think we could agree to that condition.
Thank you, that'd be great. It's been a concern for residents of the town, particularly as the, these panels are going over the aquifer that provides our drinking water, so.
Yeah, we did also submit information from Mehdi Perry from VHB, who's a hydrogeologist.
Right.
And to the extent it's helpful, he looked at the situation, found that this project, there doesn't sit above the aquifer, or the, if anything were to go into the ground, and from the ground soil go into the groundwater, the groundwater flows away from the town's municipal water source.
Thank you.
Not that we, in any way hope anything ever gets into the ground, much less into the groundwater, so.
Just to follow up to, just look back at my emails, and I believe the email was sent with the first solar letter around August 10th, I don't know if that's what was said earlier, but John, that's what I'm seeing.
Yep. That's what I had in my notes as well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I mean, I have a couple.
I jumped in, they're not necessarily done, they haven't presented their.
Okay.
Yeah, so what we hope to do was have Sarah walk you through the revised site plan and updated stormwater management report, answer any questions you have. We're hopeful at that point that after this very long process and many hearings, we can close the hearing and move on to decision. So Sarah?
Thank you. Sarah Ebaugh from VHB, the site civil engineer here on behalf of the applicant. As John noted, the most substantial change to this plan is, of course, that we're adhering to the 50-foot setback on all property lines. There is one portion of the site which abuts the town municipal lot, where there's actually no current vegetation there to provide a buffer, so we have provided, proposed a mixture of shrubs and trees in that location, just to provide some additional screening. You can see, it's kind of small in the color graphic, but it is outlined in detail in the site plans as well. While the setbacks did impact the overall size of the solar array, the approach to the stormwater management design has stayed essentially the same due to the cover type similarities between meadow mix and woods, just in terms of peak rate runoff. So the volume within the infiltration basins that we're providing is pretty much the same. We are incorporating sediment forbays at the request of Mr. Alley as well, and you can see in the revised stormwater report, which has a revised hydroCAD model, and just a couple updated numbers in terms of volumes, that we are still adhering to the 10 Massachusetts Stormwater Standards. Again, in terms of the setback and to conform with the negative determination from the ConCom, there is a pinch point at the northern end of the site on the color graphic, it's sort of the area between those two disconnected arrays. We are actually unable to provide a 20-foot wide access road in that location, just, again, staying out of that 100-foot buffer zone and conforming with the 50-foot setback. So strictly in that location, we are providing a 16-foot wide access road. This has been reviewed by the Fire Department. Chief Smith has actually provided an email this evening to Ken Buckland and myself, noting that he's reviewed the changes and has no further comments at this time. I would be happy to share that, or Ken, to share with the board, just to have that record of his approval. Again, it's strictly in that location, due to the constraints everywhere else on site, we're proposing the 20-foot wide section as required, with appropriate turnarounds at either end.
Ken, do you think that we could get a copy of that letter?
It's an email, and it is, I think Sonya posted it this evening.
I don't see it on the website.
No.
I haven't got around to it yet, then, well, it's going to be posted by tomorrow, yeah.
About 4:42 this evening.
When do we get it, Chief Smith?
Yeah, it's Fire Safety Officer Smith.
Okay.
Close, same building. Yeah, it would be nice if we had a copy of that letter, Ken, I mean, they're asking us to take action of some sort tonight, and we don't have that letter, so not that.
Yeah, it just came in this evening.
Okay.
So one other minor design change, sort of unrelated to the 50-foot setback, so the applicant has requested to use deer fence instead of chain link, which has been shown on previous designs. The detail sheet on C 3.01 has the change. This fence actually sort of blends in better with the environment while still providing that security and screen with the barbed wire on top, and of course, adhering to the request that the six-inch gap be provided from the bottom of the fence to the finished ground elevation for critter crossings. So that's pretty much an overview of the site plan changes, I'm happy to answer any questions specific to those.
So it was indicated that the site was reduced by 30%. Was, did that translate into 30% of panel reduction too, or just 30% of land mass?
30% of the panel reduction.
So we went from 11,160 to roughly 8,000?
I believe so, it's, there's a couple different numbers that they've been using in terms of the modules versus panels. So the panel count went from about 930 to 613.
Okay, those numbers aren't anywhere near on this document.
Correct, the decommissioning plan will be revised based on the final panel count and reflect the accurate number of modules.
While reviewing the decommissioning plan, I had a couple notes myself, since we're on that subject. It's been our newly adopted policy, and not just on this project, but projects before this now, where no scrap or resale values are used in calculating the decommissioning.
They agreed to remove that, so you may not.
Yeah, it's not in there, though, it still references scrap value and sales.
But we got a new one that had that.
Well, this is the one that I got today.
Oh, is that the one, oh, that's the, then we don't have an updated version.
No, no, the one that we resent to Ken today was the same one that we submitted, same revised decommissioning plan that we submitted in June.
Yeah, this one has July 30th, it's noted, but it's, it does reference.
Doesn't have the changes they've agreed to yet.
Right.
No, no, it, I was assured by the StanTech, the company that prepared the plan, we may have a representative of StanTech actually.
Yes, Joanne from, should be on the call as well, and Mehdi from VHB is also on, if he's available.
And regardless.
Yes, correct.
And regardless, our proposal that we have a, you know, further and final updated decommissioning plan as a condition to construction, you can add in that condition, just confirming that doesn't take.
No salvage or resale? Yeah, because I'm looking at the numbers as they break out, and you got a line item for 79,638, that reduces the amount that would be held in. So we definitely wouldn't actually address that.
The 125% escalator, the decommissioning value.
Yep.
The 2% and per annum escalation, all that needs to be.
Right, the other thing that I'd like to address. Right, the other thing that I'd like to address is the 2% annual escalator. You know, I'm not the most savvy guy in the world, but it wasn't hard for me to find out that the average anticipated increase.
Inflation.
Inflation rate is anticipated between 2022 and 2050 is 3.9% on average. So this is, this is only 50% of the anticipated inflation rate, so I think that has to be looked at, because I don't, I don't think it's adequate.
Yep. So if you'll permit me to ask an open question to Haley, Haley, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, I was just going to speak up. Yeah, honestly, I think that's fine, you know, if you want to pick a conservative number, that's more than 2%. According to the bylaw, it would be reviewed or updated every, re-reviewed every five years anyways, so if inflation slowed down and the world goes back to normal, maybe it goes back down to 2%, but I can understand that in the next few years especially, it's probably still going to be a wild ride.
Yeah, exactly. And to be honest with you, when I was doing my research and I came up with a 3.49%, I gave you a pass on the 8% inflation rate that's going on right now.
Yeah, understood.
I didn't put that in the calculation, and I anticipate we'll probably be dealing with that next year as well, so there's a little bit of a free ride built in.
Well, and to John's point, it would be, you know, this project wouldn't be pulling a building permit in more, in less than a year's time, and so it'll be updated next year anyways, so if it is 8% again, it'll get captured.
Okay, thank you. And then the last thing that I saw that caught my eye was, you know, we come up with this number to protect the town, should this system have to be dismantled by the town or paid for by the town? How does prevailing wage enter the equation? Are we, are we, you know, subject to prevailing wage?
Yeah, you would be.
Yeah, because it's.
If you put, if you put the project, if you take it over and put it out to bid for someone to come in and actually do the work, yeah, it would be by prevailing wage.
So I guess my question would be, because I really couldn't figure out how you came up with the number, is how did you come up with a per-hour labor rate for the people that would be decommissioning the project?
Is Joanne on the line?
Yes.
She can answer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, thank you so much for allowing me to speak, Joanne Blank at Stantec, and I lead the decommissioning team. And I just wanted to let you know that for both equipment and labor rates, we use what is called RS means, which is a really popular industry-accepted method of estimating construction costs. So the labor rates are kind of a blend between we use electrical engineers and onsite labor, lower labor for certain activities, and then we also incorporate the equipment operators at a higher rate. So there definitely are numerous rates that are used, and those would be updated every year, or, you know, when we would update the plan, we would update that also. We pull those once a year.
Well, the review rates is every five years, but do you have a median average? Just, you know, the electrical engineer being paid $100 an hour, the guy pulling stumps being paid 30 bucks an hour, where does it meet in the middle?
So it doesn't even go anywhere near as low as $30 an hour, because we do include, you know, it's, there's a lot of benefits involved in there also. I want to say, and I'm just, I'm just pulling up that exact, hold on one second here, see if it's in this one. It is 94, wait, the average is about, where is it here? Here we go. Skilled electrician right now in this plan that we used was at $79 an hour, 78.65, a laborer at 58.95, and an operator at 72.20 per hour.
Okay. So you're valuing solar modules disassembly and removal at $4 per unit, $11,000 a unit? So again, doing the quick math, I came up with 7.13 modules per hour being removed, and that's based on an eight-hour workday, not taking into account lunch. Doesn't seem to me, and maybe my math is bad, and if it is, I apologize, but if your low end of the scale is $58 an hour, I don't, I don't see the math adding up. I mean, $40,000, $40,000 just doesn't seem like enough money.
So the, so the rates at which the panels are removed, and this is pretty standard across the board, is they really only figure a couple of minutes to remove the panels. Now, there are other costs that, besides that $4, if you look at the cost for removal of the trackers, some of that cost for the panels, taking out the wiring, et cetera, is incorporated into that. So the panel cost is really just grabbing those panels off the, off the tracker and piling them on the ground.
Okay. Seven, I don't know, does anybody have any comment on that? Seven panels per minute, every minute of the workday on an eight-hour shift. I mean, I've seen labor sites, and nobody, nobody works at that rate, it just doesn't happen. I mean, that.
Check that number and make sure that.
And again, I don't think these numbers protect us from prevailing wage should this, something happen, not that we're saying it will, I mean, we certainly don't want any issues, but if for whatever reason the system goes dormant, we have to pony up, prevailing wage is going to just gobble up these estimated labor rates without even breaking a sweat. So I'm not saying that it's something that should be agreed to tonight. I think it's, the decommissioning plan is pretty serious, it's our last line of defense when it comes to protecting the citizens of the town, but I think some thought has to be given to the notes and comments that have been made, at least so far by me, I'm sure there's others that want to chime in and add to it.
We've been listing concerns all along, so.
Right, well, I'm just saying it for the gentleman, where he's brand new.
One thing I could add is that over the years, as different towns have approached this decommissioning financial assurance issue, that 125%, the 25% over the reasonably estimated amount, has generally been thought to try to make an allowance if the town needs to do it itself. What would be the costs of paying prevailing wage, conducting a procurement process? And that's really historically been the reason for that 25% cushion.
Thank you for the input. We're going to take out the recoveries. That's, I think that's it, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, a question to you, while we're talking about decommissioning and the proposal by the applicant to take it outside the scope of the permanent condition, the building plan, so a question through you to Mr. Buckland, if we, if we take that approach and take the decommissioning plan out, you know, we list all these thoughts we've had, all these conditions, but that takes it out of the realm of the public hearing, is that a concern? So if we do that, then there would no longer be a public hearing on that decommissioning plan, and is that a concern that we should think about?
No, I don't think so, because it's a technical review at the point where you're getting the value for labor and materials for the deconstruction of the site. And the more accurate analysis of costs will be when the plans are hardened up and you know more specifically what's going to go on the site and how it's going to be constructed, and that comes with the building permit.
Okay, and who?
Typically, this is typically how we've done it with other projects as well.
Who from the town would review and confirm those numbers, then? Would that be your office?
You would. It comes back to the planning board.
But it's not in a public hearing setting?
Okay, so the building, the building commissioner would bring it back to us and notify us at that point?
Correct, and it would go to you, and the applicant would come in for you with the listing of the costs and the labor.
So even if it wasn't, even if it wasn't in a public hearing, it would be in an open meeting, and at least the citizens would hear the deliberations, and that would be open to them.
That's correct.
Okay.
I wouldn't feel comfortable keeping this out of the.
No, that was my thought, but as long as we make sure the building commissioner brings it back to us at that point, because that hasn't happened in the past.
It happened on Woodland Cove, as a matter of fact, that was one of the reasons why Woodland Cove was stopped, because the building commissioner stopped it until they got the bond for the construction of the road and utilities.
That went to the ZBA though, not us.
That was a 40B application, you're correct, yeah. But that's just saying that the building commissioner is responsible in doing that and other projects as well.
That's great, I just, perfect, you answered my question, thank you.
And just to be clear, so I understand, in Section 1.1 Solar Farm Components, there is no mention of batteries, so that's going to be corrected?
Right, so we're imagining a condition that says we do a further and final update of the decommissioning plan that takes into account the final design of the project, including all equipment, and any other parameters you care to put in, the annual escalation rate from project commissioning. Thank you.
We're learning about this as we go along, so.
Okay. Do you have anything else to say before I ask the other board members comments or questions?
No, we're happy to answer any of the questions, and hope we've provided enough information for you.
Sherry?
I just have a couple of questions. I noticed while looking at a pleading at the DPU for another case that is before us, that you have intervened in a case involving the Plymouth Study Group and the, the cost associated with interconnection related to Eversource. I wondered if anybody on the caller in the room is familiar with that case?
This is Haley at Long Road. Familiar with it, yes, not in the weeds on it, but it's generally a sort of developer, industry writ large process that's very long and complicated, but is just, I guess, the way that these cluster studies have evolved in Massachusetts, and, but yes, somewhat familiar.
Yeah, my question really goes to whether, the outcome of this proceeding, and it's, you know, on its way to going to hearing, there, the issue that has been raised by the developer group is the question of whether interconnection costs assigned by Eversource or other utilities may be so high as to prevent solar projects from being able to interconnect. I know that you all have an interconnection agreement, I think you have one that is included in the record. Would I wanted to get a sense from you on.
Sorry, just sorry to interrupt, I don't think that's part of the record, I don't know if, we do not yet, we're in that process, so we're in the interconnection process, but we do not have a signed agreement yet.
Okay, then, pardon me, I thought there had been a reference to that in this record. Then, if you don't have an interconnection agreement yet, you're in the process of developing that, and there will be costs assigned to that in the course of this proceeding, is it, is it of concern to you whether these costs will be prohibitively high? Because in some of the pleadings, language like that has been used by solar developers to express concern about the outcome of this proceeding. So my question really is whether, whether the interconnection process and costs assigned with it could be an impediment to you going forward?
Sure. So for this particular project, this is one of the most advanced, you know, Plymouth is one of the most, more advanced cluster studies that is, are occurring in Eversource East, and we know the costs at this point, or know what those fees are expected to be, and, you know, our project, or us as a developer, we don't have an issue with them, we probably would have withdrawn if we had. But, you know, it is a very large group of developers, and a lot of them are, just have different perspectives than we do, so I can't speak for, you know, who's all saying what, but as far as Long Road is concerned for this project, we don't have that concern.
Okay, I mean, it was stated as sort of a broad concern of the entire group, that the costs would be prohibitively expensive?
I think honestly it's some just posturing from the community at large to hold, hold things where they are versus letting them escalate even more, and again, speak, every developer underneath the solar developer brand have a different perspective on this for their individual projects. So, you know, I think that is kind of, they're trying to stick to a core message at the highest level, but kind of when you get underneath it all, every developer has a true different perspective.
Okay, I understand. And I'm assuming, since we haven't heard anything about it, that any, any dispute that may have existed between the landowner and the town with respect to amounts owing has been resolved.
Ken, can you confirm that for us, please?
As far as I know, the issue has been resolved with Mr. Fletcher.
Okay, as far as I know, it's not, doesn't really bring a whole lot of comfort to the party. There's no way for us to define, to definitively figure that out?
No.
Okay.
And just so I can put a cap on the interconnection study issue, do you think that the timing of entering into the interconnection agreement will be such that there's no real delay in going forward with this project?
The agreement's expected early next year, so.
And there'd be no construction prior to the agreement in hand?
Oh, yes, of course.
Okay.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Baptiste? Jane?
So, just playing devil's advocate here, if the interconnection agreement is not reached, is there, sort of in the back burner, the possibility of storage on-site for this project?
There's no possibility of an interconnection service agreement not being reached, there's a requirement under federal law and state law.
Federal law.
The distribution company has to let an independent generator connect, and the only question is at what cost? And that's what's being resolved favorably, reasonably timely with this.
And I would just add to what I imagine is, the planning board's concern is, you know, would something be happening on this site before that is known? And if it, if an interconnection agreement isn't achieved, then there would be this stranded work that's been done. And that's, it's just commercially, that would never happen, you know, no solar developer would start work before that was, the interconnection side was all known. No bank would finance a project that didn't have that done.
I think it actually maybe goes a little further than that, in that I think there's a concern about storage on-site that, if I understand correctly, on-site storage of the power that's generated. that, if I understand correctly, onsite storage of the power that's generated has, you know, potential risks to a town that has a volunteer fire department. That's, that's where the concern lies, and if, you know, if this agreement is proving too expensive, but you want the project to go forward, one would think, well, maybe you'd look at storage on site, and I don't think that that's a, an option.
Sorry. When you, when you say storage, you mean like energy storage, or I thought you were talking about like material storage?
No battery storage.
Oh, oh, uh, no, I mean, there's not, there's nothing we would be able to do with a battery even if we wanted to without an interconnection agreement.
Okay, this project could not become a pure energy storage project like, say, the Cranberry Point project. You know, if for some reason the solar project couldn't go forward, it simply wouldn't go forward and if...
But you understand our concern about...
Yes.
And then, just quickly noting, looking at the drawings, this makes sense to me. And it looks like only C 2.03 has been updated to align with this, but C 2.01 and 2.02 have not?
They, they all have been revised. C 2.03 was revised a few days later after discussions with the fire chief regarding the roadway width.
Okay, because these two don't show the recent revisions in the sets that we've got.
They should, the only revisions on those pages, again, are the 50-foot setback and the relocation of the infiltration basins.
Right, and they don't show up on these. The revision is not noted and there's not a 50-foot setback.
Yeah, it still shows 10 feet.
On 2.01 and 2.02.
Oh, understood.
2.03 shows it. I think 2.00 does not show it either.
Okay, that was, sorry about that, a printing error. The electronic plans that were submitted to the planning board, both on 11/4 and again today, with just that one revision of the roadway width, the planning board has an electronic copy of that. I'm so sorry about that printing error.
You said that there was also a change to the fencing that shows up on 3.01? And again, this one doesn't have the revisions, so I'm guessing that the chain link fence gate and the chain link fence with barbed wire are both old?
Correct, yes. So again, the electronic copy that you have access to will have that new detail.
Okay, can, can you describe that fencing?
Yeah, I've never, I've never heard of deer fencing.
It's a, it's a little bit thinner of a wire. It's just a little bit easier to install. I know a lot of other, other solar projects have used chain links, so if the board is more comfortable with that, we can keep that chain link fence detail.
So the barbed wire is staying at the top, is...
Correct, on both, on both details, but again, if the board is more familiar and comfortable with having the chain link fence detail, we can revert back to that.
I was just curious about, I don't know about deer fencing, anything, so.
I've never seen it, so I can't comment on that.
I wanted to respond to the concern about Mr. Fletcher, because we did find and submit in early August, in that same August 10 submission, a settlement agreement between Mr. Fletcher and the town that settled all his liability and called for a payment from him to the town.
And this was in August?
We submitted in, in August.
Yeah, this, this document, Ken, is not on the website either. I don't remember seeing anything from the planning office concerning the, the agreement. It'd be nice if it is actually in place. I mean, that's, that removes a big concern that the board had, but it would be nice if we could see the document.
Yeah, it needs to be part of the public record because it's been raised by members of the community. They would like to see that as well, I'm sure.
I agree. Yes.
I'll get a copy of it.
So, is that all you had, Jane? You want...
That's all I have.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. Any other questions?
If there's a place that's made for solar, this is it. I mean, it's cleared already. It's, it's a dust bowl. If it's going to go anywhere, it should be there. My main concern is if you go down Chod Pond Road, you go around a corner, there's a power line. If you walk up there a short distance and take your first left, there's a town pump. If you walk down the road another 10 minutes, there's another town pump, water supply for the town. If you walk another 20 minutes or so, I did it with my dog today, there's another pump. So there's three pumps right along this line that, that's my main concern. I know many times you ask for reports on the water quality and all, and I think the town administrator mentioned that it should be more or less of every site. That's my main concern with this site is the water quality. I know it, the town sits on the aquifer. Where it ends or where it begins, I don't know, but there's three town pumps that supply water around the corner. That's my main concern.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know which way the water is moving.
Exactly. I mean, the project I like because of its location and because it's already cleared and there's nothing around, there's no houses, there's cranberry bogs, houses across the street from Chod Pond, but my only real concern is the water quality.
Right.
There are three town pumps within walking distance of here. I walked them today. That's my main concern with this site. Other than that, details, there are some that need to be addressed, but that's my main concern. You mentioned earlier, they're there. Our drinking water is around the corner.
Do we have, do we have any feelings on monitoring wells? I mean, that subject's been broached before.
If I may respond to just a couple of points very briefly. Understanding your concern, and especially in that area of the site that has already been previously cleared, we are proposing that metal mix to sort of improve the ground cover in that location, sort of help slow down the water and infiltrate. That's all addressed in the stormwater management report as well. And again, I just wanted to draw back to Mehdi Perry's assessment that was provided on June 30th, noting that the groundwater from the project site actually flows away from the municipal wells. And he provides some more detail in here. He's actually on the line as well, I believe, if there's any specific...
Does he have any drawing on that, or this just what he thinks?
From his research and understanding, the project site is located at least 0.7 miles from the nearest edge of any Wareham Fire District wellhead protection area, and groundwater flows away from the municipal wells.
Okay, but that, that's just speak from him. There's...
So we have that in writing?
Yes, this is, yes, he's a hydrologist as well, as we have the report that was submitted with the, the last, and he's on the line as well.
I'll take a close look at him because I, again, I'm not opposed to this particular site because of the conditions that exist. As a public official, I'm really concerned about the water quality. That's my, my main concern, is I've walked to those wells today, they're bang, bang, bang. You can walk to them, it's easy to do. That's only my, my main concern.
He's, he's on the line as well, if you want to hear his words from him, but just wanted to read from his report.
If, if you could weigh in for us, that would be helpful.
Sure thing. This is Mehdi Perry, Senior Hydrogeologist at VHB. I did speak back in the summer at a prior hearing. And so, just to answer the questions that I'm hearing now, yeah, so I had submitted a memorandum dated June 30. The third page of it does have a heading, Water Supply Assessment, and that does have in writing the description that the Wareham Fire District provides a municipal water service in this area from wells, and that the aquifer, which is the underground formation that supplies the water that the municipal wells extract, has been delineated on behalf of the Fire District with a wellhead protection area, which has been reviewed and approved by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. That wellhead protection area represents the boundaries of the aquifer and represents the land area from where those municipal wells obtain their water. The project site at its closest is about 3/4 of a mile away from the nearest edge of that wellhead protection area. The nearest actual well is about 1.4 miles from the project. There is a figure, Figure 3, that is attached as part of that June 30 memorandum. It's titled Water Resources Map. And if people do have that in front of them, I can sort of walk through it. It shows that aquifer in blue shading. It is the top right corner of the map. It's labeled Wellhead Protection Area for the Wareham Fire District. Well number seven is shown. The other wells are too far, they're off the map, but we've zoomed in enough to show the closest well. And the project site is shown with the red outline labeled Project Location. There are a few dark blue arrows which represent the groundwater flow direction at the project site. Those can be seen to be aiming east, southeast from the project towards the stream and bogs adjacent to the project. And that stream and those bogs which flow into the stream flow south, which is away from the wellhead protection area and aquifer that's to the northeast. So, based on that information, I had concluded that this project is, is not likely to have any effect to the aquifer or to the municipal wells regardless of, of chemicals that may or may not be there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
This is, sorry, apologies. Just wanted to add one quick thing. I believe one of the last times we were in front of you all, it was confirmed that Mr. Rowley's review, and I think he was on the phone, he agreed with basically Mehdi's assessment.
I'm sorry, say that again? I was busy reading Fire Department's response.
Oh, sure. I just was bringing up that, I don't know if it was the last planning board meeting or two, two meetings ago, but when Mehdi was on last time, I believe Mr. Rowley was on as well, and he confirmed with, with Mehdi's assessment. I can't remember if that went into his actual written report or if that was just a verbal confirmation at the time, but I believe the engineering review was on the same page with Mehdi's assessment.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking at the email from Wareham Fire concerning the stretch of road that doesn't meet the 20 feet. And it doesn't really look like there was any kind of resolution to that subject.
So his last email is very brief, I'll admit. We did have a few phone conversations, but if you go further down during, in the thread, I had originally provided a figure to him that showed a, a section of 14 feet wide, and after discussions with him, he sort of wanted it as wide as possible. We were able to fit 16 feet in, again, without impacting that 15 foot. So his email is just indicating that I have altered the plans, noting that, and he has no further comments. I can have him provide sort of a more detailed...
Yeah, I think we would want a formal letter from the Fire Department signing off on that. And I'm looking at the email. That was today at 4:42.
Correct.
Yeah.
Noted. I spoke to him this morning on the phone and asked if he was able to pass something on.
I know, a lot of this stuff never finds its way to the board, though. It's like, surprise, here it is. Any more questions?
A couple of comments?
Comments, go ahead.
I don't think I have a question. Okay, so first, I believe the applicant was hoping for us to close the public hearing and act on this tonight. Given the fact that the, all of this material is, is not in our hands, in order to make them part of the public record, we can't, we can't close the public hearing, I don't think. I mean, that's the board's decision, but I'm just making my comments. I, I think it's really important, and, and we need to work on this on all projects, but this is the one we're talking about, that we need to know exactly what document set and artifacts we're working on. So the, the August letters which you've submitted, I gotta go back and see if they got transmitted to us via email. But generally, the board looks to the town website for the arti, and that's not your problem, it's just how we, how we try and look for things. And that's where the public looks. So if these artifacts really aren't on the project website, it's not available consistently to us, and it's not available to the townspeople, and then they continue to question us and the applicant about things that possibly have already been resolved. So I think between now and, and I think we have to continue this, whenever we continue it to, the relevant set of artifacts that we're going to consider when we, when we make our final decision, and the submissions from the applicant, in fairness to them, we need to have all of those submissions and answers, particularly things like the, the town agreement with Mr. Fletcher, because that's been a bone of contention before this board many times. If it's been resolved, we need to be able to definitively point to that and say, in our decision, we're considering this, yes or no, but whatever we decide, we point to that and say that resolves that, that issue. And I'm going back and forth on the decommissioning plan. I understand the approach. I could go either way. I could be convinced that we could handle it after the fact, if we properly condition any approval. But I think it's very important that before we close the public hearing, all of these artifacts be made available to the public and to us so that we're, and we know these are the ones we're considering as part of our review.
With the latest and most relevant, I would have to...
And particularly some of the items that Attorney Clivens has pointed out that we should have, that I can't lay my hands on. And, and perhaps if I go back and look through the email chains, I can dig them up, but...
It just makes it so much easier if they're...
Some, and certainly just because I got it in email chain doesn't make it available to the public. So I think we need to work on improving our process there.
Okay.
So, my, my input to you is I don't think we can close the public hearing until we get all the artifacts posted, and that, that's some work that we have to do, I think.
If I might make two points about that. Thank you. Just to make a couple of points about that, I think the, the board's goal of publishing every single thing on the website is a fantastic one. It's a great, good government practice. But, one, we've, we have presented information to the town planner that's been shared with members of the board that has also been talked about in this public hearing. Of course, if we were just presenting information in a public hearing and not also providing documentary evidence of it, that's the purpose of the public hearing. The other thing is, everything, single thing submitted to the town is subject to the Massachusetts Public Records Act and can be requested by any citizen at any time. So remains available for inspection. So I think it's a great, good government goal to have every scrap of written submission posted. But I don't think it's necessary, and I don't think, frankly, we should be penalized having submitted items months ago and then have to wait for another continuance now after over a year for a decision just to post some additional items on the website. They should all be posted.
They, you're right, they should be. I agree with that, but that doesn't, that, that doesn't address this with the, with the typographical errors and the, and the unrevised pages. And this is, you know, this is what we're supposed to be acting on, the latest and most relevant revision of, of the site plan. And this isn't it. And that's not, that, that, if you, you know, if you want to look at who's, who's responsible for what, this is not us.
No, absolutely, and I take full responsibility for printing a outdated set, and I apologize, that one sheet. Again, the, the graphic does convey as much of the information as I could. The revised and corrected plans were shared with Ken Buckland and the planning board about a week and a half ago, or two weeks at this point.
Well, for anybody that knows me or doesn't know me, the last thing I hate, the, the thing I hate the most is last minute information, right, wrong, or indifferent. The email from the Fire Department at 4:42 on the night of the hearing, that doesn't fly. That, that's just, that's disrespectful to expect us to address that.
It could also be addressed as a condition to say, the plan as last revised shows this 16-foot...
Correct, yes.
...point, and the condition could be, that's approved, subject to the board's receipt of an approval letter from the fire chief approving this 16-foot width in that location.
But it's referencing a site plan that's not... But it's referencing a site plan that's not accurate.
Absolutely, I can give the fire chief a call, he was on vacation for a bit, which has sort of added to the delay, but I can have a more formal response submitted to Ken and of course, shared with the board regarding that.
Mr. Chairman, I think there's, there's a more basic point that I hear Carl getting at, and it's of concern to me, which is, what is the record in the proceeding? And we need to make a decision based on the record, and if we don't know what is in the record or things that you think are in the record or not, or people from the public think that they're in the record or not, it puts us in a situation where an appeal could go the wrong way for one person or the other simply because of matters not being in the record. So, I think it's something we need to be careful about and scrupulous about.
And not make assumptions.
Yes.
Okay. If the board has no more comments, I would...
I'd like to make one comment, just for the record, if you submit something to us after midday Thursday, I don't even look at it.
Understood.
Just so you know, I mean, we, we've come to be, it's what we work on, we've been, I don't know the right word, but if you're in opposition and you have to make a decision and something comes in today, I'm working, I get home, I have to have dinner about 4:30 to get here in time, I just don't do it. If it comes in after Thursday, midday, I don't even consider it, just so you know.
Any other comments? Charlie, do you have anything you want to comment on?
I just have a question that I'd like to ask Ken to confirm.
Mm-hmm.
Ken, are we working on the 19, or the 2017 version of the bylaw?
Oh, we're not.
It should be October 2019. I think we confirmed that with Attorney Mason at the outset of the hearing, October 2019.
If that is the case, then I question whether or not you can allow the decommissioning to take place after you approve the project, because it simply says, it used to be in an early version of the bylaw, that the decommissioning plan would be submitted no later than when 50% of the project was under construction. I believe that statement was taken out of the bylaw, but if you check the zoning bylaw now, and I looked at the, at the 2019 version, which I have here, I'm not seeing that statement. So, I'm not sure that you can allow the decommissioning plan to be submitted after the fact.
As a condition.
It just needs to be verified, because I don't have the information to tell you.
Okay. I would, just from a comfort level, I would have to agree with that anyway. I, I think it should be in place in all of discussions back and forth.
Well, you've done that for other projects anyway, made it a part of the record, part of your approval.
Right.
You've approved the amount, so everything is said and done by the time you give your approval.
Right, yeah, it was all set in place prior to...
I just wanted to confirm that, that it wasn't part of the bylaw now, it used to be, and I don't see it.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much for your presentation and your comments. Being a public hearing, I am gonna open it up to public comment, and then we will see where that takes us.
Sure, thanks for your attention, and...
Thank you.
We obviously defer to you as to what you see fit in terms of whether to continue and post materials in the record, and obviously, that would give us a chance to submit the corrected site plan.
Honestly, I think the project is so close to being tied up, whether it be approved or not approved, I'm not saying anything. I, I think by the time we meet on the 28th, if you do your due diligence and getting the site plan tidied up, and we do our due diligence of getting the documents that we feel need to be on the record, on the record, then when, when we reconvene, should we reconvene on the 28th, I, I think we'll be in a much, much better place.
Thank you.
And, you know, it's been a long, hard road, I get it. Two more weeks is, as my mother would say, two weeks ain't gonna kill you, so...
Mr. Chairman, just one question about our process at this point. We have a draft decision which we have received, how do we proceed with that draft decision? Are we going to discuss that, revise it? How do we proceed with that?
Well, I got, I don't know about you, I got that draft decision this afternoon.
Right.
So, to con...
Yeah, part of my concern is I have no idea what it is, and I'd like to know what the process for input is.
Yeah, no, I would say at this point that it's, it's a non-issue and be considered for the, for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. At this point, we'll open this up for public comment. As in the past, I would ask very politely that whatever you bring to the table is new information and that we don't rehash old wounds, whatever they might be. There's been a ton of information presented, so if you've got something that enhances that information or something brand spanking new, then all me, by all means, we want to hear it. If we're gonna head down the same old path of making claims that can't be substantiated with written documentation, then just please don't, don't waste everybody's time, because we're not, I'm not gonna consider it. So, with that said, is there anybody who would like to come forward? I got my wrong glasses on, ma'am, I don't, I can't see who you are. You, you could be Dwayne Johnson for all I know.
Good afternoon, or evening, my name's Nancy McHale, 87 Farring Hill Road West Wareham. I just have a couple of questions about the new presentation of the project that was submitted on 11/4, I believe. There, up in the north corner, there are some piles of stockpiled material that says it's going to be, I think that's page six, that it's going to be smoothed over and graded or something like that. Was that the piece of, I thought that was the stockpiling that Concom was concerned about? So, if indeed that's the case, I'm kind of misunderstanding, because I don't know that that was appropriate to have been dropped there in the first place. That's one thing. The other question is, in terms of the water, any runoff from this project will go directly into the Agawam River, which then is a major concern for Wareham. Wareham, many of our residents, myself included, have wells, not everyone is on town water, so while the, the position of the town wells is important, the general health of the aquifer is extremely important to all of us, regardless of, you know, just with the location of the town wells. Let's see. And, one more thing, if I've read this correctly. The, on the hydrogeologist's report, I was able to look at page 13 of that, that's the 630 report. It looks like there's about a 40-foot high ridge that runs through the, the forested area of the property, because about half the property is still forested, and the comment was made that no work will be done on the site until the interconnection agreement is, is, is signed. Does that, I just want to see or hear if that 40-foot ridge, because I haven't been able to look at the, the newest set of plans, is there intent to bring that ridge down to the face of everything else? And if so, if it's no, not work being done for this project, would there need to be a separate earth removal permit and tree removal permit granted for those?
I haven't been out there to see a 40-foot ridge, you spend more time out there than I do.
You come from Charge Pond and head down towards the project, that's the hill. The way I go there is the second opening, which basically, you're going straight downhill. I don't, I believe that's town property, and I don't believe it would be excavated. My opinion would not be excavated.
Okay, the ridge I'm referring to is not on town property.
It's below the town property, say, again? It's below the town property in the hockey stick path. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the ridge runs right through the middle of that.
It, it's the last page of the hydrogeologist's report.
It's not treed where that happens. It's in a cleared area.
So, so I guess the question is, are you asking if there's any more anticipated removal of earth...
Yes.
...concerning that ridge?
That's part of it, because again, the more you take things down to the aquifer, the more chance you've got for contaminating.
If I may respond to some of the concerns?
Yes.
So, to address...
Can you point on the map where we're talking about?
Sure. So, I believe that she's referring to the topography map with the ridge, the area that has not been cleared is this area of the site here, south of the access road. This northern part of the site is, Mr. Corbett, the area you're referring to that sort of dips down is a bowl and has been previously cleared. So, overall, the intent of the project is to do very minimal earthwork. The note that was first referred to about the existing stockpiles is just, again, based on survey that we had done at the time, there were existing sand piles on site in that previously cleared area. The note is just to clarify that, that soil is not gonna, and sand is not going to be removed, it's just gonna be spread out within the previously cleared area to provide a flat location for the panels to be installed on. Again, that's also an area where we're proposing the meadow mix, which has been used in sort of these sandy conditions as well. The meadow mix, again, just to reference back, does improve the ground cover, it's a very similar ground cover in terms of peak runoff rate to the woods of the southern end of the site, and all that is addressed in the stormwater report as well, in terms of water quality and peak runoff rates for the required storms.
Okay, thank you. Nancy?
Excuse me, just to clarify, the 40-foot, you said 40-foot, right? The 40-foot raised elevation area in the southern tree, you're not gonna grade that?
Correct, the drainage patterns and the grading are same, the same. The only minor grading that's happening is to flatten it out again where that access roadway is occurring, and you can see the proposed grades on that, which, again, this is an outdated PDF, same design intent of flattening out for the, the access road, just for the truck access.
Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate your attention to the details.
All righty. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Sure, sir in the back?
I haven't listened to all of the meetings here, but I haven't heard what I think is extremely important is the talk about what panels are being used, First Solar, is that correct?
Correct.
And the end-of-life treatment of those panels. This is an abstract of an article, "More than 78 million tons of photovoltaic models, modules will reach their end of life by 2050. If they are not responsibly managed, they can A, pollute our terrestrial ecosystem, B, indirectly encourage continuous mining and extraction of Earth's finite resources, and C, diminish the net environmental benefit of harvesting solar energy. Conversely, successfully recovering them could reduce resource extraction and waste and generate sufficient economic return and value to finance the production of another 2 billion photovoltaic modules by 2050. Therefore, EOL, end-of-life, photovoltaic modules must participate in the circular economy, and business and political leaders are actively devising strategies to enable their participation." Currently, the, the huge majority, huge, maybe 90% of, of panels are put in dumps. That is because it's economically infeasible to recycle them, and there are very few recycling facilities in this country. It costs $1 to $2 per module to dump them, and $20 to $30 to recycle them, and I think that is for polysilicon panels. Extracting cadmium telluride from the encapsulated thin film panel module that they are in is a more difficult process. First Solar, the panels that are being used, the manufacturer built its reputation on being environmental stewards, and that included that they had a prepaid plan in their purchase agreement to recycle at their own facilities the entirety of the panel, including the cadmium telluride for reuse, which served them because it's a finite metal and it's getting harder to extract. In 2012, they stopped that. This was a, a separate fund, so the money was all there, and no matter who took over the ownership or the responsibility, it was paid for to be responsibly recycled. This is an article called "First Solar's Inconvenient Truth" that discusses that whole arrangement and the fact that in 2012, they stopped that agreement, yes.
Can I make a short comment?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're bringing First Solar up to the witness stand and cross-examining them on their business practices. In all fairness, these people are not First Solar, so you can't hold, you can't hold them, their feet to the fire for something that the manufacturer of the product that they plan on using it does. I, I just, I don't think that's fair.
I'm getting to that.
Well, if you could get to it.
Okay, that's the background, and it, so, as the owners of these panels, they're responsible for what happens to them at the end of their life, and because they have not been in a mandatory or a contract with the producer of the panels, this is a whole new ballgame. So, I would like to know what they're going to do, and this also affects the decommissioning that you have, the contract with you, for the cost, is my understanding, because it is 20 to 30 times more expensive to recycle them properly, and if they're not recycled properly in a dumpster, in a landfill, these are going to crack, delaminate, and be available to all of the conditions that the Stuttgart study about the fact that, that cadmium telluride is highly soluble, and in, and the period of time that they tested, which was 1.5 years compared to the standard 24-hour shake-it-up test, that almost all of the cadmium telluride leached out of broken panels. So, it's extremely important, and I would like to submit these articles, if I might.
Sure, you can bring them to me.
Pardon?
If, if you bring them to me, I'll make sure they get to the planning board.
Do you know it's already, or it's just...
No, I don't think I have.
Okay, they won't be reviewed by the board tonight?
No, no, I don't expect them to be.
All right. I'll, I'll get them to Sonya and have Sonya distribute them after she gets them up on the site.
The only thing I would ask you to consider is that I have scribbled on all of them, and if you'd like clean copies for Sonya, I can bring them tomorrow.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Scribbling, scribbling gives us insight into, insight into the mind.
I don't think we need that.
Before I ask for another person, would you like to respond? I think you deserve a response to that, if you'd like to offer one. If not, I understand.
We can provide a response before the 28th.
Okay, good, all right. I just, I didn't want to not offer it to you.
Mr. Chairman, if, I could make a quick comment. I, I think actually the point being raised is a good one. What I don't see, though, in our zoning bylaws is a provision for decommissioning that sets out the, the process that, that you're proposing, Annie. And it would be, I think, something for further study and amendment of our bylaws to, to set forth a different means of decommissioning. I don't know that we could necessarily do that under our current bylaws, but I remain... I don't know that we could necessarily do that under our current bylaws, but I remain to be educated on that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
We'll have to consider that in our findings. It's important information, and I don't want to deliberate now, I have thoughts on the protections from other places, but it's definitely not in the scope, as I read our bylaws, for us to regulate.
To dictate how.
It may be beyond the scope of what the State Zoning Act allows as zoning authority anyway, even though I too agree it's an excellent environmental policy point, but it's, I believe, outside of the zoning power.
Actually, as an attorney, if you could provide that input, that would be interesting reading to me.
Sure.
Yeah, if you're going to present a response to the subject, that would be helpful. Is there anybody else who would like to step forward?
Good evening, Barry Cosgrove, Blackmore Pond. Point of order, Mr. Chairman, I have 20 signatures here from folks who I've worked with to organize some comments, so I appreciate a little bit of flexibility in terms of the amount of time, and as much as it'd be, a lot quicker than having 20 people speaking four minutes each and 80 minutes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Second, and thank you for your service throughout town, on behalf of all the folks here.
I have another 18.
And another 18, 38.
Can you submit all those at the end?
Of course we will.
Yeah, I could.
Noteworthy, these last 18 are specifically from Charge Point Road. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Buckland, just a couple of housekeeping items. The distinguished Mr. Riley a year ago raised the question of whether or not the notice to rebutters was correct. He had raised the question that not enough homes may have been properly notified. Has that been resolved, Mr. Buckland? Or through you, Mr. Chairman?
A list of butters was provided by the town assessor, and those were people who were notified as to the public hearing.
Yeah, but the point, of course, is were the correct people notified, and if they were not properly notified, then every hearing that's been held so far, you've got to start over. So, I think that's something that really ought to be looked into. Again, this was a letter from Mr. Riley, and I have a copy of it tonight, if helpful. Second point, on the right-of-way, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Buckland. Mr. Buckland, have you been provided a copy of the deed that was used by the proponent to explain its version of what the easement is or isn't?
I believe we have the deed that shows that it has the wording that it was used to identify the use of the right-of-way.
Okay, and the deed that you have, am I correct, is actually a deed regarding the taking of land for the building of Route 25, correct?
It could be.
It is, sir, and I'll make this point. The question that was presented by the body quite appropriately was, yes or no? Does this applicant have a right under their con easement with the town-owned property to put this eight zillion watts under the ground? So, if you're answering that question, if Mr. King and I are exchanging property, Mr. King would want to see my deed, and if I have an easement, I'd like to see his deed. I don't want to see a deed from over here for something totally unrelated. This is a significant issue, and I know you don't like things being repeated, but sometimes you have to repeat important stuff. Yes or no? Does this applicant have a right under a valid easement, as recorded in the registered deeds, to utilize this land for this purpose? I will point out, we had a couple of people read the deed that was submitted, the unrelated deed, the taking deed, and couldn't even find the language that they're using to then connect all these other dots. And I'll make another very important point. There's a difference between an easement or a right that allows you to take power into a location, as opposed to the right to take power out of a location. So, repeating I know you hate, but the smart thing to do here, costs the town nothing, is to engage a certified land court title examiner to answer the question. It is what it is. It's a binary answer. We don't have it, closing the meeting, avoiding this, and the absence of that would not be in the town's best interest. On the decommissioning, apart from it not being available, I own an escrow company. I know a little bit about charity bonds. I talked to CEO of the biggest charity bond companies today. This industry is in a huge state of flex. Deductibles, for example, are changing. So, it's one thing for a proponent to have a charity bond, but the deductible is cash. They have to have liquid cash to pay that deductible. They're changing, they're changing dramatically. The cost, the construction costs, you're running with impressive detail. Fact of the matter is, the disposal cost, not cutting the stuff down, but the disposal cost will be where you're going to see these costs change, I'm told. And battery costs, not even addressed yet. They want a closing, not even addressed yet. On this one, again, in the town's best interest, costs you nothing. Sophisticated bond council who does this every day. In fact, somebody ought to be thinking about, what do our current charity bond say? Next point, on the independent hydrology study, the town administrator urged in a writing to this body that a groundwater hydrological study be done, as has been required in other projects. And the obvious other project is Fairhill. The guy on the phone has never been to the site. He did it from a desk in New Hampshire. We asked the question, why didn't you do all the sophisticated stuff? And his answer was essentially, well, I ran another study from across town, and I didn't see a problem, so how can there be a problem here? I hope I'm not in that emergency room when the doctor says, hey, your knee looks bad, but I just took an MRI of this guy's knee, so I don't need to check yours with an MRI. It's insanity. The comment about the three town pumps, that's exactly the point. That's exactly the point with the massive shifting in the topography of that land, you need to know what the impact is. On the issue of PFAS and cadmium, I've done what you did. Been living online, reading this stuff. Turns out that there is an answer, and it's not the one that's been presented. There's something called BOMs and CDFs. BOMs and CDFs, I'd ask you to research them. They are independently prepared. Manufacturers, when you buy something in the store, you open the instructions, that's what they say. BOMs and CDFs tell you what it really is. On the interconnection agreement, this is an IQ test. This is an IQ test which we can't fail together. They're asking you to approve a project to build an arena when they don't even know if the team they have is going to be accepted into the league. The fire chief letter, who knows what that says? The sentiment with Fletcher, for months, I said, there's a dispute. No, there isn't. Yes, there is. No, there isn't. Now, suddenly, there's a settlement on the dispute. Looks like there was one. What does it say? This applicant is complaining about how long it took. They're the ones that in the middle decided to go to the ZBA, didn't get what they wanted, asked for special grants from conservation, didn't get what they wanted. They've had a different story for every pair of eyes they've addressed. At ZBA, in the same room, oh, we can't build this project, it can't happen, it's financially infeasible. Here they are.
We're closing in, Barry, if you could just kind of wind it up.
Thank you. Remember, 38 people, times four, I've been here, I think, four and a half minutes.
It's been a little longer than that, but I understand. I'll give you a chance to wrap up.
I appreciate it. I'll try to wrap up this way. Respectfully request, in as much as it seems to be in the best interest of the town to continue this thing, you continue it out more than two weeks. We've engaged with Scott Housley, the founder of the Housley firm you may be familiar with. He's a distinguished, respected hydrologist. He's begun to look at these materials so that he can answer at a level that I certainly could not, some of the questions you've quite appropriately raised, what does this really mean for the groundwater? Maybe he's going to come back and say he agrees. But the town has said you should hire an independent one. You haven't done it, so now the volunteers have got to use their own money to hire someone to do it? That's just not right. Lastly, the evaluation standards under this bylaw for a site plan approval have, at Section 1541, seven items. They all begin with the same verb, reduce. Will consider approving your project if you can show us you reduced, for example, the volume of cut and fill. They want to increase it. They took down already 10 acres without permits. Now they want to take another 11. Reduce the number, remove trees, it's a duplicate thing here, same point. You go down to reduce, to reduce, to reduce, all they want to do is increase, increase, increase. They don't live here. We do. Please, please, extend this out a month. Please bring in these other experts. It costs the town nothing to get this right. Now, with 38 people that I promised to get their comments in, I don't want anyone to be mad at me, so I'm just looking at my notes. Oh, by the way, this is a substantial paper we will submit, but, you know, anybody who walks down there with their dog, like this gentleman has explained he does, it's the automobile mile of solar projects, right? And now there's another one proposed right down the street. Cumulative effects. Cumulative effects. Thank you for your service throughout town.
Thank you.
One question before Mr. Cosgrove. You say you've commissioned an independent hydrologist study. I don't know the gentleman or the firm. When do you expect that to be completed?
To do it right, he said he would need to have, the 28th would be, not getting the first-class dancer. And I'll point out, with respect to the gentleman, who's brand-new here, just certainly not directed to this fine gentleman, but these guys have asked for 50 continuances. We've asked for none.
So, when do you expect you would have-
Need a month.
That would be mid-December?
Yeah, so instead of December 20, excuse me, I beg your pardon, instead of November 28th, we'd need to get into December. Remember, there's another way around that, and that is you don't charge the citizens to do the job that the town administrator has told you guys to bill them to do. Let's not skip ahead here, huh?
I just, I was just, you made a statement, I was just trying to figure out-
And I understand, but I didn't want to lose the opportunity to make sure that retired people, people on fixing, single moms are going to be footing a bill that should be paid for, you know, by these guys who are getting paid by the hour and putting their kids through college on this project.
All right, that's, we're good. Now you're starting to dive into personal attacks, that's not needed. Thank you so much for your comments. I would like those to be, so that we can put those on the record.
One more question, what does BOM and CDF stand for?
BOM, Bill of Materials.
Oh, okay, I know what a bill of materials is.
CDM, Construction Data Form.
Okay, thank you.
Thank God I had that page open, I would have thrown that out the towel. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Eric Lentilla, 15 Squirrel Island Road. Just a few comments on tonight. Mr. Schultz made a comment that it's been a real learning curve. I think in the last two years, on some of the projects we've all been involved with, we've learned a heck of a lot, and we're continuing to learn, so it's important that all of this information that's being asked for, even the little bits, are important, that they're open to the public for those that are able to, that we've learned from those, and we did more research from some of the comments, you know, from what they determined and et cetera, so it's really important that that continues. I can appreciate some of the changes they've made.
Yeah, to say, direct the comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Some of the changes they made, I think it's on the right road. I was pleased to see, you know, some of those things. Something, I'm still having problems with those, the hydrogeological reports. They're very difficult to understand, and in some cases, you know, we're listening and listening and looking at these charts that go up and down, and I still have a real hard time understanding them. And when they use language like "not likely" or "maybe," and I've heard that from a couple of them now, and that makes me nervous, so it tells me there's no real guarantees. So, if those people are going to make reports, then I think what Barry even mentioned, then there needs to be some on-ground research done, you know, monitoring that. If they're going to give reports, then they should be on the ground doing something that's going to be substantial for us to understand about the water quality, because the water quality is what's, seems to be coming back as the biggest issue in a lot of these solar projects, besides a whole lot of other issues. But I'd like to see, it'd be nice to be able to understand a little bit more how they, you know, create those charts and stuff, and the only thing I can think of, like, I'll use Fairhill, we brought in, they did the welding of several wells, a little more easier to understand, but if there's nothing on ground being done, it's really hard to, you know, swallow when they're using words like, you know, "most not likely to affect the aquifer." Just, it's a little unnerving. But thank you, you know, for all the work.
Thank you. We have a hand up, somebody online? Okay, you're in the room.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep, if you could identify yourself, please.
Yep, my name is Jill Ryskin, 218 Charge Pond Road. Some of my points were already hit on, so I'm just going to be brief. I think us talking about what chemicals may or may not be leached into the aquifer, the groundwater, most of us have wells on this road, and a lot of people, most of the people on Charge Pond Road are concerned about this project. I know some signed papers have been turned in, and there are more. We are very concerned, and Charge Pond Road does not want this project. The more people we've been talking to weren't even honestly aware of the project, but more people are becoming aware. There's just a lot, I think, that still needs to be answered, and I do appreciate the board continuing this, so the community can find more stuff online, because there were things that I didn't see either, so thank you for that. We're just really concerned about this project, and a lot more answers need to be had, particularly with the water. These solar panels leach, they have the potential to leach chemicals into the groundwater, and it's so close to the aquifer. We don't know what would happen. And again, I won't go into all my other comments, they've been kind of touched on by other people, so that is it, and I thank you for my time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, at this point, I would entertain a motion to continue. Hearing the responses and the comments of the public, I am going to leave the continuance date up to you, to see if you feel that you can be properly prepared. So, we have the 28th of this month, or we have the 12th of next month? I'm going to, you know, full disclosure, the 28th is already booked, and it's already got a couple of projects on it that are already highly contentious, so I don't know how much time you're going to be afforded on that night, whereas the 14th, 12th of December, is wide open. You would be number one on the docket.
Lindsey Kestner, if you're on and want to respond for Long Road on timing?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Understood, there's a full agenda on the 28th. I, I think that is our preference, if possible, and we can provide some prompt response to some of these questions and concerns in advance of that meeting to help facilitate it.
Okay, just, you know, again, full disclosure, it's a full agenda. You very possibly are not going to get the outcome you're looking for on that date, so as long as you're...
Definitely not.
So if you're picking that date in hopes of closing the public hearing, you know, there's a real possibility that it isn't going to happen. So as long as you're going to that with your eyes open, we can put you on for the 28th, if that's what you want.
Mr. Chair, to make sure that I understand, we can close the public hearing, but we're not required to deliberate and decide at that time.
Correct.
We need all the time to take in whatever the last bits of materials were.
Yeah, that's correct. So that would give two weeks to the concerned citizens if we decide to close the public hearing on that night, to present what it is that they feel they need to get presented. But it's no guarantee we're going to close the meeting and then vote on it. It could go another two weeks before we actually take a vote, or more. Yep. So, I mean, I definitely am not one to tell people what to do, but if, you know, this were the difference between me getting a brand-new hot rod and not getting a brand-new hot rod, I'd be looking at the 12th.
Yes, we hear you. We're happy to go with the 12th.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 025. Get my glasses, I hate being blind. Continue the public hearing for 33-21 Wareham PV1 LLC Site Plan Review, 0 Route 25, MAP 115, Lot 1000, until the regularly scheduled planning board meeting of December 12.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Carl Schultz, a second by Mike Baptiste. All in favor, Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
I'm going to vote aye with the admonition to everyone, please get whatever your last submissions in are well, well ahead of that date. Don't, don't send them in that morning.
Yeah, please don't.
So we need, we need a lot of time to get through all of this, so as early as possible helps us all.
It does, you know, to echo...
So I'm going to vote aye, or I think I said aye, but...
So, and the chair votes aye, so it passes 600. Just as a side note on that, some of us work, you know, so available time is not a lot, and when we get the 4:42 on the night of the meeting emails, that makes me crazy. Makes my hair fall out. I don't need any help with that. So, thank you very much for, for coming tonight, we appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
Continued public hearing for 19-22 Dos Amigos Realty.
We need to continue 1222. We have to vote.
Oh, you're right, I apologize. So the proponent for 12-22 Wareham MA3 LLC 91 and 101 Farring Hill Road has required a continuance for 112822, so we would need a motion for said continuance?
I move that we continue 1222 Wareham MA3 LLC 91 101 Farring Hill Road to 1128.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Carl Schultz, a second by Jane Gleason, all those in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 600. Okay. 19-22 Dos Amigos Realty LLC Lots 1010A3 and 1010D on MAP 74, two lot subdivision. I'm not going to ask if there's someone here to speak to it, because I'm looking at them.
Good evening, Brad Bartolo with J.C. Engineering, on behalf of the applicants. Been close to almost two months since our last hearing. We had initially described the project back in September, and within three weeks, we received comments from Mr. Riley right before the next public hearing, so we'd requested a continuance to address his comments. The plans that are getting passed out right now are, I'm assuming the revised plan from 1026, it's halfway up the page.
Yep, 102622.
So these plans address the comments, the comment letter from Mr. Riley, addressing more technical aspects of the plan, adding test pits, confirming soils, adjusting the roadway width based on his recommendations and the fire department's recommendation. So the fire department initially reviewed this project, didn't have any concerns with, I don't believe, didn't seem like they had any concerns with the turning template, didn't seem like they had any concerns with the roadway width. They amended that plan after Mr. Riley's comments, so we're following their recommendations to increase the roadway width to 12, 18 feet, which is the minimum requirement. We do have Cape Cod berm on one side, so it'd be about 19 feet of pavement. We did perform a secondary test pits to confirm groundwater. We did a slight adjustment to the drainage basin design because of the increased pavement, increasing about 50% in, in material or coverage, because it was originally designed for 12 feet. We've also updated the turning template on the last page, so that the fire truck can still maintain access into the, into the roadway, turn around at the end, and then back out, turn around and then drive back out, back out on the Squirrel Island Road. Again, what we're proposing is a two-lot subdivision. The roadway is about 510 feet to the very end, well within the 1,000 linear foot, linear limit. It's basically going to be a common driveway, but it is, it is a roadway that provides access and drainage to two, two new lots. I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Riley a couple times last week. He reached out and basically said, I think he's happy with the plans, he had a couple outstanding comments. One that brought up was the maintenance of this roadway, it is private. On these plans, it says homeowners association, it's going to be some type of deeded maintenance document that's going to need to be recorded once these deeds are, are lots are conveyed out. I'm not sure if they're going to go forward with homeowners association, but if they go through with that, it's all going to be spelled out in those documents on future maintenance. It is a private way, so those two lots will be responsible for the maintenance and plowing, like every other private way that's in Wareham. The other question was the utilities. We have reached out to Eversource and began the process of Eversource acquiring these utility poles, so there's some paperwork that was submitted. We have signatures from all the property owners that are on that street, and they're going through their work order, preparing that number, so it's going to take time for them, for Eversource to do that, but that's just so that there's no issue in the future on maintenance on utility lines for the, I believe it's like eight or nine poles, actually maybe 11 or 12 poles that lead from Farring Hill Road out to the start of this development. We are proposing underground services, underground line within the subdivision itself, but it is overhead leading down the main road.
Has Eversource's response to this request, in your opinion, been one that you anticipate them to actually follow through with this?
Yeah, I, again, I don't know the full story on the years going back of the attempt. What may have been an issue is the cost of doing it, and our clients are, or applicant, I'm sorry, is, is going to be taking on that themselves.
So they're going to shoulder the cost of helping the homeowners transition to pole ownership?
Yeah, so they have, they have to send the engineers out, Eversource has to send the engineers out, determine what upgrades, if necessary, need to be done.
So, so the proponent really doesn't know how much it's going to cost to complete this?
Not at the time, no.
So if, if you feel, based on your interactions with Eversource, that they're giving you the feeling that they're going to go forward and make this change and transfer the ownership from the homeowners to Eversource, just to give you a fair chance, when I ask the homeowners, do, am I going to get the same kind of warm and fuzzy feeling, or am I going to be staring down the gun barrel of a 12-gauge?
I don't understand what you're asking.
Is Eversource telling you what you're telling me, and am I going to get a completely different story from the homeowners?
I don't, I don't believe so, I just...
Because right now, you're asking us to take into consideration the fact that the poles still belong to the homeowners, and you don't know when Eversource can, can change the ownership and how much it's going to cost. So there's nothing to prevent you from coming back a year from now and saying, hey, Eversource is out of their minds, they want 50 grand a pole, I can't afford it, and this transition of ownership never takes place.
There's a chance that, you know, they back out if the cost is too much.
Right, but I just want to, I want, I want to know that, understand that if you're going to use that particular piece of information as a lever in getting approval, that it has to have some validity, and it's not just a wish and a prayer.
Yeah, I mean, they're going through the process of setting up a work order, that's as far as it's gotten.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we're talking about the poles on Squirrel Island Road that exist today.
Yes.
Can we get something like that in writing, that they're committed? Because that story don't even sound good. We've had issues on Squirrel Island Road on who owns the poles and who wants to own the poles, and all of a sudden now it's the homeowners association? I don't think that's correct. I think there's some misinformation. I think we have a gentleman in the audience that lives on Squirrel Island Road, can we ask him that?
Well, we can, when the public hearing, after the proponent is finished, we can certainly ask. That was kind of why I asked that question, knowing full well there'd be some public comments.
It's been a long night, we've heard a lot of misstatements tonight, and I'm getting bullshit.
Okay. So, carrying on?
I think that's pretty much it. The changes are pretty straightforward on the plan.
The one thing I did notice is the fire truck turnaround. Did you use the latter truck for that?
They commented that it was the appropriate dimensions on the plan.
They did, okay, I didn't see that.
It was in the second letter. October 4th, I believe, second, last comment.
Proposed BP, fire apparatus backing movement shown on Sheet 5, shows that it takes up all the available space for a limited turning area. It's recommended that along with widening the travel surface, that this turning area be made longer.
You're in the wrong letter.
Stated 11-4.
Is that the second one?
Oh, I'm sorry, 10-4, my apologies. My apologies. Here's one from 11-14, that, that sound about right? Because there's nothing on the site in between.
Yeah.
So on 11-14, this letter is misfiled, this pertains to 0 Route 25, doesn't even pertain to this project. Let's see if I can find it in the email.
It's, it's on the website, because it's the only way that I've gotten it, because the town doesn't forward me comments. I have to look myself on the website.
I see signed letters from residents, I see timeline poll issue on the 13th, I see email from Wareham Fire, but that's for 025. Stamp subdivision, response from Charlie Riley, comments on 10-4, and then it just gets older from there, there's, there's nothing else on the site.
Yeah, you're looking at, 10-4 is the date.
10-4.
I just looked it up, it's right there.
Yeah, okay, that's the one I was reading. And...
No, that's his comment, you have to look at the response, that's at the bottom.
A swept path analysis provided was completed using the appropriate vehicle specifications. The recommended increase in road width would allow for easier access. In the event that the new tower needs to gain access, it will be difficult to make the appropriate movements. So those are the responses. So it really doesn't appear that that particular subject, as far as the turning radius at the end of the road, has been addressed.
The, the comment 4B is Mr. Riley's comments that he made pertaining to our original submission.
Okay, and where is the comment, the response from the fire department? Because that's the one I don't see on the site, unless I'm completely missing it.
Yeah. The response is right after that, 4B. Mr. Riley made a comment stating that the swept analysis should utilize the tower one and that truck specs.
Right, and that's the last thing on the letter.
And then the fire department's response says that the swept provided is using the appropriate specifications.
Okay, so I'm going to go on the assumption once again that the letter that you are referring to is not on the website, because I don't see it.
It's right here, 10-4, I just picked it up.
I have the 10-4 letter from the Wareham Fire Department.
I was just showing Mr. King, I think that the applicant is pointing to this text here, whether that response is adequate is a different question.
Okay, that's, that's, I think, what I'm getting at, is the response is they use the appropriate specifications. The last line is it's recommended increase in road width would allow for easier access. That's the very last sentence on that letter.
But it doesn't say, I've reviewed the revised plans and I think it...
And I approve.
I approve, that's, that's what you're looking for.
Right, this is kind of a give and take. This, this isn't an official sign-off from Wareham Fire, so that would be something that we'd be looking for, is a formal letter from Chris Smith stating that the road width is acceptable and the turning radius at the end of the road is accessible, acceptable for Tower One.
Referencing the plan date.
Referencing the plan date, yes. So that's, that's something to just, to think about. Okay. Anything else? Anything from the board? Mikey? No?
Well, I'm waiting to get the public comments, because I think we got some false information.
All right, thank you very much, I'm going to invite the public to have their spare...
Jane, pause.
Oh, you do?
I have one question. Have you looked at the buildable area of lot 1010-11? Set back from the wetlands? And then you do the side setback? I, I, I don't know, it just looks like there's not a lot of space left to build on.
There's plenty of room on the lot, there's not, you can't, the town Conservation Commission only has a 30-foot no-touch, so you can build within 100 feet of, of wetlands. Doesn't require variance, it's just a permit through the Conservation Commission.
Okay, but it, yeah, requires a process, it's not...
Oh, yeah, it's a process, yeah, but it's not...
If I can just jump in here, I think the bylaw says that at least 80% of the minimum lot size has to be buildable upland. So in response to what Mr. Bartolo is saying, yes, it might be in the buffer zone, but that's not wetland, so you can include that.
Okay.
What you need to do is simply subtract the actual wetlands area from the lot, whatever's left over is total.
As long as it's 80%.
There's a, there's a number here for contiguous uplands. Can you count portions of the lot that are less than 30 feet wide?
I think, I think that deals with the access and the frontage. Is there a specific section of it change you're looking at?
Yeah, there are two, two portions of both, there's a portion of each lot that sort of is adjacent to the, the access road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can, yes, you can include that. Because if you look on both lots, it's got the, uh, that shape factor, the, the circle in there that's required.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about that.
So the fact that there are portions of it that are narrow or does not infect that.
I thought there was something about if they're less than 30 feet wide, there's a question that they don't count as part of it.
There is something in the bylaw about that, I'd have to look it up to tell you what it is.
Yeah.
I can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious.
That would be helpful.
Give me a minute to find it.
Yeah, it's, it's a shape factor, just kind of avoid the hockey stick lots where you have frontage up here and the long skinny and...
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think while we're searching for that info, do you have anything else that you'd like to offer, or can I ask the public to have their say?
No, open up the public.
Okay, thank you. So with that said, is there anybody from the public that would come for, like to come forward and speak on this?
Eric Lintola, 15 Squirrel Island Road, West Wayham. When I finish, I will pass out, uh, a timeline, what took place since 2009, all the issues with the poles. So it'll give you a good time, I'll pass that out when I finish. I'd like to start also that I have signed documents that I'll give you when I finish, by all the residents, that this concerns on Squirrel Island Road. I'm gonna just read what everybody had signed here. We, the residents on Squirrel Island Road, wish to have the situation of the private pole ownership be resolved by having Eversource take control ownership of the designated private poles. Because the poles are privately owned, Eversource has refused to service any damage to lines or poles due to inclement weather, et cetera. We have been informed by Eversource that since they do not have ownership, this responsibility falls to the residents on Squirrel Island Road. When purchasing our homes on Squirrel Island Road, we were never informed, nor was it disclosed that this was the case. We, the undersigned, asked the planning board's assistance to not allow any new building permits, and I know you don't give permits, but you have to approve the plan, for new construction by J.C. Engineering or any other construction company to go forward on Squirrel Island Road until this issue is resolved. First and foremost, uh, it has to be clarified, and J.C. Engineering needs to have this clarified, that we are not the owners of the poles. Mr. Perry is the owner of the poles. The documents I've submitted to you that are online on the website distinctly states that, from N-Star and from Eversource. We do not own the poles, Mr. Perry owns those poles. And he owns part of the road, and he's made that very clear over all these years. We have, uh, and gone into the first phase of, uh, the acquisition request to Eversource to have the poles turned over, J.C. Engineering's working on that. We have all signed that to have that go ahead. We did the same thing a few years ago. And it comes down to who owns the poles and who's gonna pay for the poles. The residents will not pay for the poles. This is between Mr. Perry and Mr. Churchill, J.C. Engineering. We will not pay for the poles of residents, they're not our poles. If they were our poles, that would be a whole different story. That needs to be clarified. Just gonna go on and continue a little bit. There are bylaws here in Wayham that are to protect the rights and interests, not only to types of businesses, but also there to protect the rights of homeowners. The board has been informed of a serious infraction of Chapter 93A of the Massachusetts Consumer Law, uh, law that has been allowed to continue by J.C. Engineering. This is no longer just an oversight, or to say, no one really understood the situation. It is also a situation that exists elsewhere in Massachusetts and has been allowed to slip through the cracks. This should now be a question asked by the planning board when contractors present their building plans and is well included on their building plan. This is part of the whole construction. Uh, it's nothing different than if they're hooking up to the water on the road, you gotta deal with the town, or, uh, whatever. They're connecting to the poles, the electricity to the poles, that's part of the construction project. That's not where they just wash their hands and that's it. It, it is important and it, it needs to be disclosed that there are issues with this poles to the homeowners. The residents on Squirrel Island have weighed the options, including legal, on how to proceed with trying to resolve this problem. We have no objection to building of new homes and would like to see this problem resolved as easy as possible. We are asking the board to put a hold on this project till J.C. Engineering can work out the plan for the pole transfer to Eversource, which would include the cost of the transfer by Mr. Perry, who owns the poles, and by J, or by J.C. Engineering. This would also include the homeowners approving the said plan. Because of the many false statements to resolve the problem and misinformation given by the pole owner for many years, the residents and hopefully the board would wanna see a legal, written guarantee of this before approval of the plan to build any more new homes. The emails that I have sent, those correspondence with the town officials over the years, Mr. Perry, it's, it's being taken care of, end of story. Keeps coming forth all the time. There's plenty of documentation of who owns those poles in those emails also. I can't make it any more clear than that. The poles belong to Mr. Perry, the problem belongs to J.C. Engineering. So they have to pay for it, we are not, we are, we have signed the documents as abudders to the poles. We wanna see this resolved, I know Mr. Churchill wants to see this resolved. So if it's taken care of and paid for by either party, not the residents, we, they can move forward. And we'll be, feel happy about that, and many years of what we've had to go through, we can put behind us. So the timeline, I'll pass this out, we'll state clearly what's happened and I'll also give the signed documents. These are, one last, these are online, they went in late today, but they were, no, so they're online now.
I see them, they're, they're...
Okay, but I will also hand these out.
Okay.
Any questions, I can...
I, I, I don't, does anybody have a question, Mr. Lintola?
I've got a question. I don't know if it's for you, Mr. Lintola, or, uh, the, the applicant, but, uh, in the interim, before Eversource takes over ownership of the poles, what if something happens? Who is responsible for repair of the lines or the poles?
It's either the property owners or whoever owns the poles.
Well, could I ask a question to follow up on that?
That's the reason why we're going through the process with Eversource.
Do you, do you have a, a connection agreement with, I'm assuming you're gonna connect to the very last pole on the line, or at least the last pole, to where you're gonna come off Squirrel Island?
It's like maybe second or third to last pole.
So do you have a connection agreement with that pole owner, or do you have a connection agreement with Mr. Perry?
Mr. Perry owns the poles, yeah.
I think that's what he's trying to assert.
I'm not, I'm not arguing who owns the poles. I put a document in front of Eversource, they said, get these signatures, that's what we're doing. We put everyone on that document as full disclosure. So there's no questions on who owns the poles or who doesn't own the poles. These owners are signing off on Eversource acquiring ownership of these poles.
Of Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
But, but with no timeline?
It's, it's, it's up to Eversource time, whatever they...
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not being combative, I'm just making sure I understand completely.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Perry, by your own admission, owns the poles.
As far as I know, I don't know who owns it.
You just said you had an agreement for an electrical connection with Mr. Perry, either do or you don't.
The applicant has worked with Mr. Perry over, over the past months or year regarding transactions. So land swaps have taken place, so there's a, there's a relationship between the two.
Okay, alright, so, having not seen anything to the contrary, I'm gonna go on the assumption that Mr. Perry owns the poles. You have a connection agreement with Mr. Perry. By doing that, you're not really addressing the, the pole concern for the residents. It, it could be a month from now, it could be 10 years from now, it could be never. All you're saying is, is we're gonna attempt to correct this problem, and that's it, that's where it ends. There's no sunset on the agreement or the attempts.
And it may never happen.
Right, okay, that's, that's something...
If this doesn't get built, doesn't get approved, we're not moving forward trying to acquire, and these homeowners will continue to do that. My applicants have already stated they are paying for this, none of the homeowners are paying for it. So I don't know what happened in the past or what agreements you had, sorry, uh, but it's, it's on the applicants.
So I, I think an important document to have in the, in, in the folder is a copy of that agreement, showing that the applicants have an agreement.
I'm stating that it's, that's, yeah.
That's great, as anybody knows, assertions are great, show me the backup. You know, it's easy to say something, it's, it's a little tougher to produce the documents that back it up and prove it. So I'd like to see the document, and me personally, I'm not speaking for the board, I'd like to see that document, see what it says, what it states, what you're asserting, and then all of the homeowners that have signed off on it. And if, if you presented a document that has no sunset, no promises of performance, it just says, yep, we're gonna go to Eversource and we're gonna try to get them to take ownership of the poles, and they signed it, shame on them. They didn't do their due diligence. But if that's not what it says, then, you know, there's a new discussion to have.
May I add to that?
Well, well...
Okay, sorry.
So, uh, through you to the board, my understanding as of our evolving position, um, the subdivision approval, should it get approved, will require that the applicant have an interconnect agreement with someone for that pole, and it will state who that agreement is with.
Oh, they have maintenance agreement.
Okay, so even further, so the, an agreement to connect?
And maintain.
And maintain.
Well, they...
They may be separate, but, yeah.
They may, well, they wouldn't be responsible for maintaining the poles, the, the applicant would not be responsible for maintaining the poles on Squirrel Island Road, correct? They would be responsible for maintaining the line from the last pole into the subdivision.
But that, that last pole where they're making their connection is what's in question.
I understand that, but whatever, whatever we approve, it will be clear to us where the interconnect is occurring and who the agreement is with. When we approve it, is that correct? Is that what our, our thought process is?
Well, I guess what I was thinking is that, uh, we would have assurance that somebody, whether it's Mr. Perry, you know, Mr. Churchill, or Eversource, has responsibility for the flow of electricity to the last houses. And, and the, the equipment that is necessary to make that happen.
So, so we're looking for legal documentation that, that agrees they have the right to interconnect, and that they have legal documentation for somebody who's gonna maintain and ensure that the, the, the flow from the main line out on Fearing Hill Road to their, to where they interconnect is going, someone has agreed that they're gonna maintain it. That would be part of the sub, whether that's Eversource, Joe in the sky, Mr. Lintola decides to step up and take care of this, but it's gonna be documented and, and agreements are gonna be in place as part of the subdivision approval. Is that, is that what we think we're looking for?
I think, I think that's what I...
Yeah, we can't, we're not gonna wait for Eversource, I mean, unless the applicant wants to wait that long. When we, whatever approval we do or don't do will be conditioned on those things, having that documentation. Just a, a question, Mr. Chairman, through you to, to Mr. Buckland. Was Squirrel Island Road a, a subdivision plan that was approved by the board or not? I can't remember, you may have answered this before.
Uh, no, it, it, it sort of evolved as, um, from an ancient way or a, a historic way to, uh, a road with a lot of subdivisions that were done by A&R. Uh, this is one of the first, um, actual subdivisions of the, uh, of the road, on the road that has occurred.
Okay, so all the history which Mr. Lintola has provided, that, that sort of was on a private way and beyond the scope of the board and...
Yeah, these are approval now required type of subdivisions, yeah, and they created almost lots along this road.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is...
May I, uh, just fill in a little information, I think, once the, the pole, once the transfer is done, it's signed off and okay, the plan, they are developing a, a plan again that they did before, uh, of how, how the layout and everything. And that plan was submitted to Eversource, and I believe that that, there might have been an approval of it, but then it came down to, well, who's gonna pay for it? And that's where we're back at that right now, but Eversource will take, obviously, total control of...
If they agree.
If they agree.
And all I was saying is, before we approve the subdivision plan, we wanna know who's, who owned, who's gonna own that responsibility.
Especially with the pole they're connecting to.
Yeah, and just also for clarification, we all signed off on a document that Mr. Churchill sent us to everyone. It's for a customer requested acquisition, uh, request. And, uh, I had a lot of discussion with a lot of the residents because of the wording, and we asked for changes in the wording that we're holding and hummed about, because it says, all private party pole owners must sign and be in agreement for this project to be designated and to be designed and constructed. So the, the document that we all signed basically is sort of like, it, it kind of assumes we're the pole owners. We all signed it, and we all signed as, we are the abudders to the pole, and we made it clear to Mr. Churchill, we were signing this, but we are not the pole owners and we will not pay for the transfer.
Did Mr. Perry sign that document?
Mr. Perry actually got word today that he did sign off on this for his property. We have all signed off on all of this so that Mr. Churchill can take the next step to make the, do the plan, and hopefully it'll go through, and the two of them will decide who's gonna pay for it, between the, both of them, that's all we want.
Thank you. Thank you. I will give these to you though. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Charlie, do you have comments?
Just the answer to Jane's question about the area.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The, the relative section, relevant section is 615 Lot Shape Factor. It does say which, any portion of the lot which is narrower than 30 feet shall not be counted toward the required lot area. Required lot area in this zone is 60,000 square feet. Lot 10-10-D2 has roughly 4,800 square feet of land area that would probably be 30 feet or less. So that would mean that you'd need 64,800 square feet. That lot's got 66,271, so you're in good shape there. Lot 10-10-D1 has roughly 2,400 square feet, that would be 30 feet or less. That would mean, uh, 62,400, and they've got 68,083, so they're good.
So they've got the... Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so, based on the discussion tonight, I think you've got two, just two pieces of, uh, information to come back to the board with. One is to make sure that we get a copy of that document for the phone, um, for the electric poles, um, between J.C. Engineering or the developer and whomever technically owns that pole you're connecting to. And...
Fire, fire chief.
Sign off on the fire department, that the turning radius for the fire truck at the end of the road is sufficient. Something a lot more definitive than what we have in front of us.
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Based on our, our discussions, I would entertain a motion to continue 19-22 Dos Amigos Realty LLC, lots 10-10-A3 and 10-10-D on map 74... lots 1010A3 and 1010D on map 74 to, again, the 28th is starting to get booked up. Gives you two weeks. Do you think you'll have sufficient time, or do you want to go out to the...
Yeah, it doesn't appear that there's much more that needs to be submitted.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to continue 19-22 Dos Amigos Realty to the next scheduled planning board meeting of November 28. I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Corrick. Call in favor. Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, 6-0-0. Thank you. Okay. Other topics not reasonably... Oh, no, we have to go back. I'm sorry.
Go back.
Yeah, we have to go back to item number five in preliminary business, review of town meetings, results and items for 2023 Spring Town Meeting. Ken, I'm assuming you're presenting on this?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I thought it was important to go over the potential for what articles could come up in Spring Town Meeting and prepare the board for the program of hearings and the process that we need to take to get the town meeting action on the articles that you want to recommend to town meeting. First on the list is Article Six. Unfortunately, that one, we, I discovered that the notice that was supposed to be sent out hadn't been done correctly. And we have to go back and redo the hearing on that one and take that one to town meeting in the spring.
I'm sorry, do you feel there's any more work that needs to be done on that?
I don't think so, unless we want to go into content and talk about changing any of the dimensional standards that exist within that section of the bylaw. Since we've already got the wording corrected and clarified, it's, the only thing left is if we wanted to take it to a next level up and add in some new standards as well.
Okay, and Article 15?
Article 15, site plan review. We've had a lot of work that was done on that one. It is still a possibility that we can take that one forward and with a little bit more work and have that one done. That would also require us to do rules and regulations for the applications that comes before the boards for the site plan review as well, too. Article 14 was, is the administration, this is the clarification of the process of variances, special permits, what agents and agencies are, and boards and commissions, what they all do and their role in the enforcement and administration of the zoning bylaw. Section 840 is the LIP bylaw. You may remember that the Attorney General was not supportive of the, very supportive of the article, even though they let it go through because it didn't conflict with the state law. But nobody's used it since it's been put in place. And it still has the possibility of some effect on housing in town. So I thought we could go back over and redraft that. We already have a draft, a redraft of it as well and ready to go. Next item on the list is the downtown redevelopment subdistrict. This is the implementation of the urban renewal plan that is going to be outlined and presented to the public on December 1st next month. And at that time, it will come along with the zoning bylaw to, as I say, implement the urban renewal plan that is put in place. So the planning board has an important role in the implementation of that. And in two steps, one in finding it consistent with the master plan of the town, and the other in approving, recommending the zoning bylaws, implement the plan to town meeting. And one more that's not on the list that I found out today. There is a move by the emergency services in town and the IT department to require co-location of wireless communications on towers and antenna so that the fire department, the police department, ambulance can all have better communications by co-locating on other antennas that are built or in place around town. So that's, those are the possibilities of bylaws coming before you for Spring Town Meeting. And I would like your prioritization of these, so what you think is, should we try to get them all through, or should we be a little more focused on a few of them and more effective in getting them by the process and before town meeting?
I think chewing them all at once is a mistake.
Mr. Chair, before we collectively decide, just a couple of comments. We should anticipate some kind of ruling from the Attorney General on the solar bylaw. Should that be negative? I don't know. That would factor into our thought about if that needs repair or improvement. Clearly, if it's rejected, there are some issues with the existing bylaw, even if we don't try and rewrite it. The use table really needs to be fixed. And without changing anything, the use table needs to be fixed. And the section about which board has authority over projects needs to be fixed at a minimum if it gets rejected. I think the revised bylaw attempted to do that, but, so that's something. We need to get, we've talked about subdivision rules and regs. They were close. Mr. Rowley did a lot of work on that with Aaron. So that's sort of hanging out there for us to approve. That doesn't need to go to town meeting, but it's work beyond the approval. This is sort of a question to Mr. Buckland. I know that in the back of your mind, you're thinking about a hydro project. Right now, that's not permitted in the use table. I don't know if we have to do work to get ready for that. And then we have the overall fear of an energy storage project, which we don't properly have. So those are other things sort of facing us, work that needs to get done. So I'm just throwing it out into the...
On top of this, yeah.
Well, the bylaws need work. And right now, we're the group of folks who care the most.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
So I nominate Sherri and Jane to rewrite all...
That was good. That was good.
Okay, no, that's a lot of work that we've got to do, and we need to find a way to do it. Hopefully, if we clear off these long, drawn-out contentious projects...
Yeah, it'll open the calendar up a little bit.
Well, yeah, we'll have opportunity to do, we've just been consumed with these solar projects for two years now.
Okay, great. Okay, all right, thanks, Ken.
Oh, he's looking for an answer from us.
Well, he's not going to get one.
I had something to think about and get back, maybe a little, looking back at the master plan and looking at priorities that you have for the community and think about what should take precedent in terms of zoning for implementation.
Do we, this is on a slightly different subject, but connected. Do we have any sense of who the successor to the irreplaceable...
Mr. Rowley?
Yes, is going to be.
No.
You can't replace him, first of all.
We do have a firm that the committee has suggested would be the strongest recommendation. We're probably going to test them out and see how they work. We are also doing a 53G consultant for the Conservation Commission as well in the coming weeks to, so we're going to be looking at a series of consultants that we'll test out and see how well they work, see if they can get as good as Charlie was at doing the work that we need.
I don't suppose it's a possibility for this consultant that you're considering to actually shadow Charlie on a project before the end of the year so that we can get his input? Because once Charlie's gone, that information is gone with him. And now we're, we have who we have, and I don't know how comfortable I am with that.
I was wondering what project we pick to do that with. The next project that comes in, we can do that.
I don't know if the next project that comes in is going to come in soon enough. I mean...
Well, we have a storage facility that's in right now, that's sitting in, waiting to go.
Storage?
Storage, a battery storage facility?
No, goods and personal storage.
The one on 28 next to the new convenience store? That one?
It could be.
Yeah, awesome location.
Just so the board knows, we had five different companies respond. We had a panel we spent two days interviewing. The panel came up with, under unanimous recommendation for this firm, including Charlie's recommendation.
Well, that makes me feel a little better. I wish they had scheduled it during the time of day where I could attend.
He made us all vote before he did it. And we all voted for the same company.
Okay, well, that's good. That's a positive outcome.
Yeah, it was unanimous. We had different people there, and it went well.
Is it a firm that has represented applicants before this board?
No, it isn't. They haven't done any of that, and not in recent times, anyway.
And they realize that they can't?
Yeah, they do. The firm is Allen and Majors.
Okay, as long as they understand they can't represent anybody.
That was brought out during their interview.
Right, yep. Pretty thorough.
Are they civil engineers or lawyers or...
Civil engineers.
Where are they located?
Lakeville.
Okay, and they haven't been before this board? That's interesting.
We had some...
They, in years past, they did represent Eddie Makepeace over there at Rosebrook. But they haven't been before your board since that time, and that was 10 years ago.
You have to say it's all of 10 years, yeah, okay. All right, it's getting late. Other topics, the only thing I wanted to bring up real quick, and I don't want to beat it to death, is I would like to reach out to, again, Starbucks, Master Mill Works, and Walmart and ask them why they've put us on ignore. I mean, the 30 days has come and gone a couple of times over, and we've gotten zero response from these people. You know, Starbucks, the containers are still sitting right where they were six months ago. So my understanding is that Starbucks is going to be before the selectmen for a license renewal tomorrow. I think this is a great time to ask them why this is being ignored. You know, if they want to continue to do business in the town, they need to adhere to the conditions of the special permit, and they're not. It's one thing if they say, all right, I understand what you want. You know, we just can't get it done in time. You know, I can't get my engineer in, I can't do this, I can't do that, whatever. But we've gotten zero, zero communication from all of these people. So I would like, you know, I can write it if you want, but I guarantee you Sony's going to have to soften it up a little bit.
That's right, maybe it needs to be tough this time.
Well, I think this time around...
Their license is in jeopardy.
Yeah, their license is in jeopardy. I would say this time around...
Exactly.
Someone should go tomorrow night. Does the board allow comment during this session?
I don't know. Would they allow comment from us?
Or can we send them a note letting...
I think we send them a note to, with the effects of...
Left because of this.
What we want to get across.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to list to call Judy tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. You want to call Judy?
Yep.
Okay, all right, we'll call Judy and ask her to bring it up.
They're in violation of the special permit.
Exactly.
Just be aware that Starbucks is probably not the special permit holder. They're a lease holder of the people that have it.
Yeah, it's Wareham Retail.
Wareham...
Retail management.
Retail management is the holder of the special permit.
Whose license is, whose name's on the license? Wareham Retail Management or Starbucks?
I think that Wareham Retail Management is the responsible party.
Okay, so if we take retail Wareham Management's license and don't renew it, then Starbucks can't legally open the door and serve coffee?
I don't know who holds the license.
We should at least let Judith know our concern.
We're squeezing the wrong grape, Mike.
What's that?
Squeezing the wrong grape if you have to Starbucks. You know, the problem is, is all night, all we're doing is playing games with these big guys. The bigger they are, the worse they are. They come here, they feed us a bunch of osmanor, like we're raising mushrooms, and we're supposed to go and bend the rules or whatever.
But I think, I think, Mike, if we, if we stood our ground on this and Starbucks was not allowed to continue because of inactivity or the unresponsiveness of Wareham Retail Management, there'd be a whole lot of people in this town just ripping that they can't get their morning coffee. There's going to be a lot of upset people.
I don't drink coffee, so I don't really care.
Well, when I go by there in the morning, there is no shortage of cars in the drive-thru.
I was going to bring up the dumpsters I went by. I said, geez, they really moved them. They look like they're in the same place.
Yeah, that's the whole reason for the station.
And just so you know, Chipotle is not on the list to get their license renewed tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I think they must be off cycle with Starbucks as far as the renewal.
Just everybody in town's on that list.
But it would certainly send a strong message to Chipotle, who could then in turn contact their leaseholder or their landlord and say, you know, you're putting me in harm's way here.
Yep.
Okay, so you're going to call Judy tomorrow?
Yep.
I...
Is it a motion to adjourn?
Wait, one...
Almost, Mike. I was going to second it.
You listed three. I think we should also send a letter to Ryan, whomsoever, from Eversource.
Oh, for Toby Road?
For Toby Road, saying you committed to doing this. We're looking for it.
Toby Road or Doty Road?
Toby. He was representing Doty, but he said, "I'm the Eversource..."
Contact, whatever.
Contact, and I don't want anything to get in the way of Eversource and the community.
Covering his ass.
I'll look at this. We should send him a letter saying, "You committed to doing this. We're looking..."
Yeah, let's do it, yeah. All right, motion, Roger.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by the chair, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane? Sam? I know Carl wants to stay.
If everybody's going to go, then we'll go.
Okay, and chair votes aye. Thank you.